Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapeta. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the August 2nd, 2023, our regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our Chaplain Commissioner Cameron Sapeta?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we acknowledge you today. We thank you for who you are. And this morning, we lift up those that are retiring from Hillsborough County in the month of July. We lift up every one of those in public utilities that are retiring. Peter Schrenoch and Michael Lloyd. We lift up in fire rescue Jason Shepard, James Chastain, Library Services Ronald Maturi, Elizabeth Cornutt, Sunshine Line Lydia Rosado, Facilities Management Raymond Gurka, Parks and Recreation Jay Birkenmayr, and Cooperative Extension Paula Staples. We lift each and every one of them up before you as they're retiring. They've served and given many years of service to the county, to your people, and we just pray that it is well with them in all their ways. Everything that they need will be met above and beyond what they could even think or ask, and we thank you for that in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapeta. Commissioner Cohen will be participating virtually this morning, so this time the clerk will do a roll call just to confirm attendance.
Hagan?
Here.
Cameron Sapeta?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Wostol?
Here.
Thank you, your quorum.
All right, thank you. This morning, we have one proclamation, which will be presented by Commissioner Gwen Myers.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. Chair. Following individuals, please join me at the podium. Tina Young, CEO, Project Link. Larry Collins, Associate Director, USF Health Physician Assistant Program. Dr. Maria Russ, Supervisor of Schools Health, Hillsborough County Public Schools. Catherine Moore, Nurse Manager, TGH Health Park Pediatric. Francis Joseph, President Can Do Inc. Dr. Sharita Ernwin, Assistant Professor, University of Tampa Nursing. Anne Carey Cozy, Community Health Program Coordinator, Bay Care Health System. Again, good morning and everybody, and welcome. I am honored today to highlight the important work that organizations do to help protect the health and well-being of our children. It truly takes a village. Project Link and the Back to School Coalition Hillsborough are community-based organizations of partners dedicated to ensuring that all children in Hillsborough County have access to extensive health services. These services include immunization, schools, physicals, and other critical health screening. Indeed, as the new school year is about to begin, the Coalition and Project Link are ensuring that children are once again ready to enter the classroom healthy, happy, and excited to learn new things. I have the pleasure of presenting the following proclamation. It reads, whereas an education is one of the most important tools necessary for a child's upbringing and is vital pillar in the strong foundation required for success throughout life, and whereas physical and immunizations are required for every child entering a Florida school for the first time, and whereas the Back to School Coalition of Hillsborough County is in partnership between public agencies, local hospitals, nonprofit organizations, service groups, the private sector, and the public school system, and whereas all of these partners support the Coalition's mission to ensure that no child will miss the first day of school due to medical requirements, and whereas since 2005, the Back to School Coalition of Hillsborough County has sponsored a series of clinics at convenient location across Hillsborough County, and whereas the purpose of these clinics is to provide free physicals and immunization to kindergarteners through 12th grade students entering a Florida school for the first time, and to keep current students up to date with their vaccine requirements, and whereas this year's clinic began July 8th and continue until August 5th. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare August 2023 as Back to School Readiness Month in Hillsborough County, extend its best wishes to the Back to School Coalition of Hillsborough County for success in its efforts, and encourages parents to take advantage of the unique opportunity as they prepare for their children for the school year executed the second day of August 2023. And I'm going to ask Ms. Tina Young to please say a few words.
Thank you. I would like to thank you, Commissioner Myers and the other commissioners for this honor. To date, we have served over 1,000 children within 30 days, with one more clinic coming up this Saturday. As described in our proclamation, our mission is to meet medical requirements for school enrollment for children within Hillsborough County that have no coverage for multiple reasons. In many occurrences, our clinics are their first and only contact with a healthcare provider. We can deliver these services through our partnerships that are represented here today. Not only are we serving our students, but this initiative is providing professional development and clinical opportunities for our future medical professionals. These tasks include administering school physicals, vaccinations, Florida shot updates, transferring of foreign health records, translation and interpreting services. I am so honored to be a part of this true coalition and collaborative that gives their time and energy to serve. Project Link is the administrative arm of the Back to School Coalition of Hillsborough County, and our coalition partners include USF Health Physician Assistant Program, College of Pharmacy, College of Nursing, Tampa General Health Park, Bay Care Hospital and Mobile Clinic, Hillsborough County Public Schools Health Services, University of Tampa Nursing, South University Nursing and PA Program, Department of Health, Arizona College of Nursing, Jersey College of Nursing, Can Do, Health Heroes, Florida Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, and Infectious Disease Prevention Network. And in closing, I'm so grateful for the financial and additional in-kind support from Hillsborough County Public Hillsborough County Tax Collector's Office, Kiwanis Club of Tampa Bay, Florida Blue, Business Plan Plus, Jonathan Means, Humana Healthcare, WOW WOW Foundation, Hillsborough County Interim Superintendent Van Ayers, his marketing department, the hosting principals, the tech team, and custodial staff. And if I could, I would like to yield at this moment to give USF Health and Dr. Sharita and Tampa General moment because these individuals, we could not do this without them. They worked so hard over the summer. If I may?
You have two minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
Two minutes, okay.
Thank you, Tina, and Commissioner Myers. My name's Larry Collins. I'm the Associate Program Director of the USF Physician Assistant Program. Our students are able to get involved in these programs, and it's a great opportunity for them to get other, to get to meet other healthcare provider students from University of Tampa, from the nursing programs through University of South Florida, and also other local healthcare providers who are giving back to our community. It's a great opportunity for our students to see what kind of an impact they can make in our community, and they get to put into practice some of the things that they're learning in school and see how that can impact people in our community. And it's a great opportunity, and I want to thank Tina for inviting us to join in the program. We've been doing it for the last five or six years now, and our students look forward to it every year, and it's one of the things that we use to help recruit students to our program, giving them opportunity, again, to give back to our community. So again, thank you, Tina, and to the Coalition.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. My name is Kathy Moore. I'm the Nurse Manager for Tampa General Hospitals Health Park Pediatrics. We run that in association with Tampa General and USF College of Medicine. This is our seventh year working with Ms. Tina. My team provides all the vaccinations for vaccines for children, updating all the shot records, getting the kids prepared, and then the USF side, along with many students, provide their physicals. So it is always very crazy, is very chaotic. We start planning in January for the events in July. We host at Blake High School, so when they talk about how it's very community-oriented, we're usually at one of the high schools, one of those very easy access locations. So again, thank you, Tina, Commissioner Myers, for this. It's quite a journey, very exciting. This year, just at our location alone, we gave 220 vaccines to 80 children that would not have been able to start school. So thank you.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Dr. Sharita Ernwin. I'm a nurse practitioner and a professor over at the University of Tampa. This is our first year participating in this event, but I've had an opportunity to do it multiple years as a nurse practitioner in the school district. But through the University of Tampa, this has been exciting because it allowed us to bring our students, nurse practitioner students, into the, into the community to provide care to diverse communities. So this was an opportunity for them to collaborate with the community, to see what's going on in their neighborhood and what's going on outside of their neighborhood. This allowed them to collaborate with other universities, to collaborate with the facilities, the hospitals, and beyond, and to see what's happening firsthand in regards to immunizations and the needs that are going on, that are needed in the community, the things needed. The kids that they saw, the students walked away with such a positive attitude. Tina, you're doing an excellent job of providing services to the community as well as bringing us in and allowing us to have that hands-on experience. So I want to thank the University of Tampa, the students, and the professors for allowing the students to be there, and Tina for inviting us to be a part of this event. Thank you.
And on behalf of Hillsborough County, Tina and your group, we'd just like to thank you all for your unwavering support. As new partners come on board, you will continue to build this dynamic coalition to make sure that no child is left behind when it comes to having their physical and immunization done to begin the school year. So thank you all so much, and we'll move to the back to take a group picture.
Bonnie, you want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. We have one off-the-agenda item by Commissioner Wostol. This is Item F4. This is to discuss options for emergency funding for fire rescue. We have several items that have been removed from consent for discussion or questions. The first one is Item May 12 by Commissioner Wostol, is to approve the award allocation of the Historic Preservation Challenge Grant Program funds in the amount of $1,300,000 for 15 applicants as recommended by the Historic Preservation Challenge Grant Review Committee. Item A15, removed by Commissioner Wostol, is to approve the Fiscal Year 23 Budget Amendment Resolution to realign $500,000 from county-wide general funds and $500,000 from Transportation Trust Funds in the Community and Infrastructure Planning Department's operating budget to Engineering and Operations Department's operating budget for localized resurfacing repairs within the Transportation Maintenance Program. Item A21, removed by Commissioner Wostol, is to adopt a resolution approving the fee simple title conveyance of a square foot medium located within Regent's Park Drive, east of Bruceby Downs from the current owner, which is Hillsborough County, to Public Homeowners Association of Hillsborough County. Item A26, removed by Commissioner Wostol, is to approve the updated bylaws of the Hillsborough County Citizens Advisory Committee. We have several items for time certain. The first one is Item D1 at 10:00 a.m., is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the proposed Plan Year 23 Annual Action Plan and substantial amendments for Plan Year 16 through Plan Year 22 action plans to close the public comment period and to adopt the Plan Year 23 Action Plan and substantial amendments. Item G2 at 10:00 a.m., is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution that establishes the stormwater management non-advalorem assessment rates and non-advalorem assessment role for calendar year 2023. Item F2 at 10:15 by Commissioner Myers is to receive the update of the Tri-County Metropolitan Planning Organization, NPO merger concept, and provide feedback to the Transportation Planning Organization, TPO. Item E1 at 10:30 is to receive a special appearance by Santiago Carata, President and CEO of Visit Tampa Bay, to present their semi-annual activity report. Item F2 at 10:45 is to receive a special appearance by Rob Higgins, Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission, to present their semi-annual activity report. And Item G1 at 11:00 a.m. is to receive a report on the Live Local Act. 11:45 is the recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve the changes?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kemp. On the changes to the agenda, please accord your vote.
Aye.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Now, Board of Going to the Public Comment portion of the agenda, the Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concerns, or your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to Board members. However, as requested, at the same time you address the Board, that comments are not directed personally against the Commissioner or staff, but rather the issues. The Board has set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The Chair will call speakers by name on which their requests have been received. When addressing the Boards, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Each person will be given three minutes. First three speakers this morning are David Coleman, and then Stephen Finley, and then
Good morning, sir. Good morning. My name's Dave Coleman. That was a wonderful presentation this morning. There's a lot of good things in Hillsborough County. But there are thousands of our children starting school next week. From cars, couches, hotels, infested mold-ridden apartments and tents. Alicia Oates always says, "Our children deserve better." Now, a civics lesson. "All elections shall be free and equal. No power, civil or military, shall at any time interfere to prevent the free exercise of the right of suffrage." Now, on spiritual life, a brother asked Abapomen, "Why should I not be free to do without manifesting my thoughts to the old men?" The old man replied, "Abad John, the dwarf said that the enemy rejoices over nothing so much as over those who do not manifest their thoughts. I listened to all your arguments about expanding to nine members. What's fair about a march vote?" All the elders, including one that voted in favor, expressed real concerns. It sounds to me like a childish smash and grab. If you are having difficulties, ask for help, an extra aid, another car, a bigger gas allowance, more staff, just work it out. Are we really trying to copy Miami? On F2, still talking about merging our NPO after 40 of yours came to scream about transit in South County. I had asked about Dana Shores, and even after learning more, I still ask why Tico isn't paying for the whole bill. Forty people came here to cheer each other, mocking nonprofits last meeting. None so loudly as a young Republican. The shouts and cheers rose through the room. At no time going forward will this Board be justified in hush and hell bursts. It's on tape. The boss can't erase the tape. If everything is fair game and ELAP money, then please give back the 11 million to stop apartments on a cow pasture in cow country. Three projects totaling $27 million each. B2, A31, and B1. I'm going to shorten this. I just want to know more about them. You just can't throw them into three projects, $27 million, and throw them into a consent agenda. A5 reduces services to the cove. Have you been there? Have you seen the mats for beds on the floor? We have so few places, this place our most needy, more, not less. On G3 radium-tested blacktop, please, your driveway first. Would you ever let your children play on it? Mosaic should never have been allowed to operate in a state with such a shallow aquifer in the first place. Now they have to find a way to get rid of their gypsum stacks, not in my backyard. Progress Village should be a federal cleanup site. Mosaic should be paying billions in fines.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Appreciate your comment, sir. Next speaker, Stephen Finley, which is virtual, followed by Michael Ball, and then Christopher Vela. Mr. Finley, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Good morning.
Good morning. Current retired Stephen Finley, current resident at 815 Al Bay Drive, Apollo Beach, Florida 33572. Vote no to the ferry, to the ferry project. I'm a third-generation Tampa resident. I've served over 10 years in MacDill between the years 2005 and 2019. I lived in Bloomingdale and made the pilgrimage to MacDill under every conceived scenario. My comments as follows. This proposal missed the window of opportunity. It's now 2023. Unfortunately, priorities and risks constantly change in our expanding communities. On this proposal, the cost-benefit analysis clearly does not favor the majority of taxpayers in this county. We have bigger fish to fry and larger infrastructure problems to solve and resolve. First, human beings are creatures of habit. In today's world, the automobile is our single most important possession to get us where we want to go, its freedom and flexibility. Next, the concept that back-dill members in our community who live in the eastern and southern sections of our county are going to drive and converge at a park-and-ride ferry, we transport across the bay, then disembark, get on a bus, and arrive at their final workplace destination is a disaster waiting to happen. Too many uncertainties are built into this proposal at clearly a huge cost to our county budget. Boats are black holes for money. Ask any mariner for verification. Just do some basic research. Hypothetically, 20,000 military and civilian work in MacDill. Do you really think a large portion of this workforce is going to choose this daily routine? The answer is no. Basic common sense. Hillsborough County Commissioners have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure the majority of taxpayers receive the prudent expenditure of precious taxpayer funds. This proposal is analogous to trying to move the Rays baseball team to Ebor City. What a great idea, but that proposal puts the burden and the risk on the taxpayers for no guaranteed return, just common sense. Finally, we all understand the critical shortcomings throughout our county concerning infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, all based on a too-fast-paced growth and unfortunately all the second and third-world effects that comes with it. Let's make the right choice to reject the proposal due to its several key concerns regarding its cost-benefit analysis. The significant increase in costs associated with the proposal clearly outweigh the benefits, and you can't sustain it long term. Reject it. Move forward and concentrate on the priority assets, not risky ones. Stand up for the county taxpayers. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Michael Ball, and then followed by Christopher Vela and Robert Hart, virtual. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, County Commissioners. Appreciate everybody. Appreciate what the Commissioners are doing and their staffs to be good stewards of the county dollar for our voters and everything. So I really appreciate what you guys are doing here on the Board. It's a tough task, just based on the couple engagements that I've had here recently, the last couple of months. It's been tough, so I appreciate what you guys are doing. I'm rising in support of a ferry, of a ferry service. I think there's not, you know, there's nothing new about that. My request is to continue planning, keep moving forward on a plan of some type, some way, somehow, keep moving forward on it, because 19% of Hillsborough County is covered by water, yet we have no way to use it. It's an underutilized resource. We have to come up with a solution to use the other 19% of Hillsborough County to help, as well as help improve the quality of life for people that live here. I'm a veteran of 20 years. I took that drive, just like the previous speaker just talked about. It's about optionality. It's about helping the opportunities to help people get where they need to be, but also MacDill is just the start. The ability to scale up potentially, to help do other things, other transactions, so everybody benefits, so the taxpayer dollar is properly used for all people who pay taxes in the county. It's a critical factor to that. That is something that we need to talk about, and we need to leverage of how do we get a plan across. Tampa Bay Ferry Alliance stands by, ready to help educate, inform, and help provide the necessary background of information so there is a plan that makes sense, that everybody can benefit from, that everybody can sit there and use, where the county can sit there and go, yes, this works. We stand by to help in any way, we'll meet with anyone, talk to anybody that needs to, but we're here to help. So I appreciate your time. I appreciate everyone's efforts, and like I said, we're here to help educate, inform, and help be part of a solution set. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Next three speakers are virtual. Christopher Vela, followed by Robert Hart, and then Dr. James Davison. Mr. Vela?
Chair, Christopher Vela did not call in.
Okay. Robert Hart, are you present?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Rob Hart. I'm here speaking as the Principal of Southswell Development Group, one of the two private partners with the county for the Cross Bay Ferry. I appreciate and understand the weight of the decision you will be debating later this morning regarding the possibility of terminating the Tampa Bay passenger ferry. As your partner, I also want to do assure once again that each of you received my communication circulated last week, providing additional information on the project that the Commission felt was missing from the presentation format of July 12. I also want to reiterate that if the project, if the ferry project proceeds, the county will soon have a viable and actionable blueprint for an urgently needed rapid transit solution, and as important, be in a position to compete for tens of millions of dollars of federal and state funding. Given it was not covered in the agenda item cover sheet prepared by the county staff, I wanted to remind the Commissioners of the impact of Section 6C of the Second Interim Agreement titled, quote, "Exclusivity," which states, among other things, quote, "The county also agrees that in the event of termination of the Second Interim Agreement without cause or for non-funding, the county will not fund, negotiate, or enter any agreement with any third party for any service substantially similar to the ferry project for a period of two years after the effective date of such termination," end quote. If the Commission votes to terminate the ferry project today, this essentially stops the project for a period of not less than two years. Given the fundamental assets and equity the county has earned over the last nine years related to ferry, including, among others, the commitments of Mosaic for the use of a multimillion-dollar land site for the South County Terminal, and the entrenched cooperation of the United States Air Force, terminating the Second Interim Agreement today will unnecessarily waste these valuable assets that the county has accumulated over the last nine years. Lastly, I want to reaffirm that Southswell and HMS ferries remain committed to this important project, and look forward to continuing our work with the Board and the county staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Dr. James Davison, the virtual, followed by Roger Lind and Bruce Black. Dr. Davison, are you present?
Yes. Good morning, Board. I'm here to ask you to send a message to the Transportation Planning Organization and the state of Florida plainly stating that the B.O.C.C. and the people of Hillsborough County are opposed to the idea of merging our TPO with Pinellas and Pasco's. County are opposed to the idea of merging our TPO with Pinellas and Pasco's TPOs into a regional MPO. District seven already exists at the state and regional level. There is a transportation management area board that exists at the local level. Merging may benefit the state, but it will leave many areas of Hillsborough County unrepresented, especially if we go to a nine individual district board. Even without that board reconfiguration, large areas of the county would not be represented with a merger. Let them know we don't want this merger. We need to fix our own TPO and transportation problems before merging with others. Last week was a busy week for you, and it can be safely stated that nothing changed except the price. Just one year ago, you were telling the people of Hillsborough County that two point two billion dollars in transportation costs were going to take ten years to accumulate. Now, last week, it only takes five years. No one even asked why. At those rates of inflation, you cannot pay for transportation, at least not with the system model you are using. Maybe we should look at privatizing some of the county's workload. Speak of inflation, eight years ago, per capita expenditures by the county were one thousand six hundred dollars for every man, woman, and child. This year, it has risen to three thousand dollars for every man, woman, and child, an eighty-six percent increase over eight years. Population growth and inflation combined only went up thirty-seven percent during that time. There is something radically wrong. We need relief, not more fees and taxes. Commissioner Wostol's Millet Swap last week is easily doable and will provide much-needed money for roads and transportation in Hillsborough County. And the thirty-one million dollar shortfall in countywide budget is easily made up by existing funds. Nothing would be left behind. I would be glad to show you, but it won't cost you a dime. So please consider changing the model that you're using for transportation. You really need to form a task force to explain why the costs are going up so rapidly, why you're paying a hundred and thirty dollars per linear foot of sidewalk. It's outrageous. Consider that in your deliberations today, and everyone have a good day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Davison. Next three speakers, Roger Lind, Bruce Black, and Humeira Afzal.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Roger Lindy, and I'm with a company called Ford. We do reinforcement fiber for the asphalt roads, makes the roads last thirty to forty percent longer. I've had the pleasure of working with the cities and counties over the last five years throughout Florida, and we're going to show you a couple videos of the actual fiber actually at work, but I want to introduce Bruce Black, who actually was, is the lead in the state of Florida, who got Brevard County started, and they're now up to using over our fiber in over fifty percent of all the asphalt they do because of the benefits.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I am Bruce Black. I'm from thirty-seven fifty Atlanta Street in Cocoa, Florida, Brevard County. We were introduced to the reinforced asphalt fiber six years ago, and when we looked at it, we had one road that was our landfill road that gets transfer trucks on it every single day, heavy loads. And so our Public Works Director at the time looked at it, and he said, you know, I just, he came up through the ranks through concrete when this fiber was introduced to concrete years ago, and it worked. So we actually did some testing with PRI here in Tampa. We did some samples. They did a liquid extraction gradation, and what we found was that the fiber in the asphalt, what happened was it actually inside the asphalt was like a bird nest or like a spider web. And so what it did was it strengthened that asphalt on the inside. So we saw this video. If you could play the first video, please. This is a slab being picked up with one single anchor bolt in the middle, and when we saw this, I was like, wow, because asphalt's only as good as what's underneath it. I mean, the base is really what the strength is. It's really, you know, the asphalt's a wearing surface, there is some strength, but it's really the base underneath that gives it the strength. So when you see them picking up this whole slab with one single anchor bolt in the middle, and it does not break, asphalt just does not do that. So that was like, that was an eye-opener for us, and it was like, okay, what is it to this? And that kind of started our journey, and as Roger noted, we're, right now, all of the arterial and collector roads in Brevard County are being paved with fiber reinforced asphalt.
Now, if you'll play that second video. The second video is actually, what you have is this two-quarter samples of asphalt, and what you're looking at is the right one has no fiber in it, the other one has our fiber in it. What they're doing is, is they're pushing a wedge down through the core, and they're measuring how long it takes the cracks to go through the asphalt. Well, on the right, two things going on. You'll see the timeframe of how long it took that crack to go down through what we drive on every day. It looks like the same alligator cracks that we drove in here this morning on. Well, what you see on the left side, though, not only did the timeframe take twice as long for that fiber to go through, but what you noticed on there was the cracking on the, with the fiber were very small. And not only did it take twice as long, but the reason that those cracks were so small was the energy's trying to find its way around that fiber, hence giving you less potholes and less construction timeframes. So with that, do you guys have any other questions for us, or?
No, thank you. We'll discuss this later on in the meeting, but we very much appreciate your comments and video.
Thank you for the opportunity to show you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Humeira Afzal, sorry if I messed your name up, and then followed by Stacy Ransom and Adam.
Thank you. I'm going to give a little bit, some big picture reminders, and then I'm going to connect some of these things to items on the agenda today and both in the coming month. Thriving economy and community needs some certain things. Some of the most important are things like safe, affordable housing for all, regardless of your occupation or income level. People like county workers, some of your employees in the building today, teachers, construction workers, information technology workers, university employees, doesn't matter what you do, you need someplace safe and affordable to live, everyone. Transportation, you need a way to get where you need to go. That means not sitting in traffic. Having alternatives to cars that, alternatives that do not pollute our environment, alternatives that get you where you need to go safely in a reasonable amount of time are also affordable, unlike most personal cars, and are low stress, both on people and the environment. It's important to having a thriving community. Skilled employees. You also need people with skills to do all the work that needs to be done in our county. And you also need affordable health care for all. There was a little bit about that earlier, so I'm going to skip that. Okay, some of the agenda items. Housing. There are a lot of affordable housing-related items today and in the upcoming month or so. These all need to be funded. People need to have places to live. There's some additional speakers coming after me who are going to talk about one of them, which is HOPE, which should be fully funded. Again, people need to have somewhere to live, and it's not just about affordable housing in the conventional sense that people think about it. Right now, it's really housing for everyone. Housing is not affordable for anyone in Hillsborough County these days. So there are other things that you need to take a good, long look at and begin to understand and study. Housing policy is very complicated. Don't believe I'm going to say this, but there was actually some good things that came down in legislation from Tallahassee. Live Local Act actually has some selected good things in there, where they talk about increased density, incentives for building more affordable housing. I strongly encourage you to take the time to learn about all the complexities of housing policy. Learn about things like the stupidity of mandatory parking minimums and how that negatively impacts our environment, and also exponentially increases the price of building new buildings and building new houses. Yes, parking minimums. You have to understand things like that to understand housing policy and how to make things more affordable. Transportation. I really can't wrap my head around why, on the one hand, you want to change how the Board of County Commission is set up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is that my?
That's it.
No warning time here. Okay.
All right, thank you. Next three speakers.
Housing for people is more.
Thank you, ma'am. Virtual, Stacy Ransom, followed by Adam Lind, and then Leila Laliquist. Is Stacy virtual?
Stacy, are you there? Yes, I'm here.
Good morning.
Yeah, I'm here. Hi, my name is Stacy Ransom. Good morning. And I just wanted to speak on the affordable housing. Housing is an important social factor that affects individual and community health. For example, people who are chronically homeless experience worse physical and mental health and have higher rates of mortality. Studies have shown that providing access to stable housing can both improve health and reduce healthcare costs. This is because when people are housed, they are better able to take care of their personal hygiene, store, and use medication properly, as well as build social support systems and adhere to treatment plans, including regular meals and keeping appointments. All these actions can help manage current health conditions and prevent further illness. For these reasons, the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council states that "A practical and comprehensive understanding of health necessarily includes housing and other social factors. Increasing the amount of affordable housing in our county and permanent supportive housing will be of benefit to all community health in Hillsborough County." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next three speakers, Adam Lind, it looks like, followed by Leila Laliquist and Austin Zane. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Adam Lind, I am the current Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee to the Hillsborough County Commission. I'm here on behalf of our committee, along with several other members in attendance, to speak on item A twenty-six, which requests your approval to an amendment to our bylaws. Our committee is unique in that our bylaws were actually baked into the ordinance that formed us, so in order for us to make a change to our bylaws, it requires a vote of this commission. There are a number of changes here to our twenty-four-year-old bylaws, but by far the most impactful to our committee is the ability to choose what time we start our meetings. For some reason, our original bylaws have a baked-in time, start time of eight-thirty in the morning, and particularly for my colleagues in Fish Hawk and Wy Mama and Keystone, we would surely appreciate the ability to have some flexibility with that time absent a motion. The new bylaws also require our committee to produce an annual report for this commission, and I'm happy to report that we are hard at work on that. I have provided for you and for the record a copy of our first three months update, which outlines our process. We have a new process to develop ideas and our progress towards that annual report. Our primary mission, however, is to serve the Commissioners who appointed us, and on behalf of our committee, I would simply ask that you think about us. You all have appointed some truly excellent people to this committee, folks who are really dedicated to their county, they're sharp, and they're well-connected with strong networks in the community. If you have issues that you're not sure about, or just want to get, take the temperature of the public on, please think of us. We're there, we will give it our all, we will respond in a timely fashion, and we would be most appreciative. Lastly, I just want to thank Commissioner Wostol, who took time out of his busy schedule to sit in on one of our meetings this spring. We truly appreciate that and invite any of you who have the opportunity to please come sit with us. What you will see if you do is a group of residents widely varied in age, in location in the county, political ideology, and experience, but you will see us there, meeting quorum at nine AM, hopefully, working together, treating each other with respect, listening to each other, and working hard to provide value for the county. I understand that the issue has been pulled for consideration today from the consent agenda. I will be here. I'd ask that if you have questions or concerns, please do ask me. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Next three speakers, Leila Laliquist, Austin Zane, and then Sheila Simmons-Tribble. Ms. Laliquist present?
Is there another book to take a picture of about our trees and home, we're just in a lot of them.
Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. County Commissioner Leila Laliquist, Brandon. I'm here to talk to you once again about saving our oak tree park at the corner of Lumston and Parsons in Brandon, Florida. There was a mention in the upcoming agenda items at some point that I read about a float that Ms. Myers requested for a float to be built for the County Commission for the Gasparilla. I would like to include the Brandon Fourth of July Parade for the use of that float, maybe make it more advantageous to purchase it for both, kill two birds with one stone, continue to attend our Fourth of July Parade in Brandon. As you know, that's where our Fourth of July Parade starts, at the corner of Brandon, Lumston and Parsons in Brandon. I've requested for the last twenty years that that may be made into a passive park, and I request again that that canopy of oak trees, lot of oak trees, over three hundred of them, be saved. We need to try to put the library at the Sears Building at the mall. The concrete footprint is already there. We have lots of affordable housing units around the mall. We have lots of affordable housing throughout that area, and those kids could actually be served well to have air-conditioned playground in the mall to be able to go to with the heat rising. We are, we've never had temperatures like this in the last hundred thousand years, and we have to face the music that we have to save our environmentally important lands because carbon dioxide is taken in by those oak trees and protecting our environment. But we also need the passive park because we have the seventh largest constituency of veterans in Hillsborough County in the United States, and the veterans count. We need a recovery center, we need a Gavin Judd House for family reunions, we need to keep our spirit of Brandon alive. The Sheriff's Office, you guys are purchasing property for the Sheriff's Office, for the Training Center for the Sheriff's Office. About twelve million dollars is going to be spent on eight acres, I think, and I think that we probably could also spend some money or actually look at our acquired lands and do some affordable housing for our homeless, and that would be pods that I introduced in two thousand and ten. If you remember, with Hillsborough Cares, many of you were not on the commission at that time. I had the architectural rendition for that for a hundred and forty-four cottages. The hundred and forty-four cottages would serve over six hundred people in housing immediately with air conditioning and solar panels. Our prison system is not air-conditioned in the state of Florida. I'm on the reentry board. I was shocked when I went to Lake City and actually toured and came out with my shirt sopping wet from the sweat as I toured this prison. This is inhumane treatment of our prisoners in the state of Florida. We are about to go into a huge conference in April of next year. We're inviting Mr. Legend to come. He just did a documentary on reentry. We need to change how we're looking at our reentry folks. We are number one in recidivism. We have the opportunity to change that outcome.
Thank you, Ms. Laliquist.
Thank you.
We've got Austin Zane, virtual, followed by Sheila Simmons-Tribble. Mr. Zane, are you present?
Yes. Good morning, County Commissioners. Hope you're having a good morning. I would like to commend you all on the jobs you're doing, because I know it's a hard job, and sometimes it seems thankless, but I notice that you guys are putting in work and listening to the community and making improvements in the things you're doing, and I'd like to specifically call on Agenda Item A twenty-two, the agreement regarding the park improvement for the Summerfield, how you guys are going to be reclaiming about twenty acres to turn it into a passive park and also kind of a, where's the word, a natural, unimproved state of the land how it is. So I really am all for that, and I would like to hope to see something similar happen on the Parsons and Lumston Oak Tree Park, where the proposed new library is supposed to be built. I agree with Mrs. Leila that the idea of putting it at the Sears or somewhere like that where it's all where it's already an open space, it's already built, there's already the parking and everything's there. Transit is a better idea, and the oak tree park could be preserved for the trees. So that way, we have a nice canopy where it's cool on a hot summer day, and it can absorb some of the heat from all the asphalt. And also, that space could be used for a Veterans Trauma Recovery Center instead of a library. And you could put like a nice community garden where people could come volunteer to plant and garden and teach kids and youth about nature and planting and eating healthy. And it could be a great project. And yeah, I just wanted to commend you guys for the work you're doing and for this A 22. And I hope to see more things like that in the future, and specifically with the Lumston and Parsons Park. And I also would like to, the hearing for the, there's another project that's proposed for the Paul's Drive on the Brandon Parkway, where it's another plot of land. And the hearing for that's not until the end of the month. But I would like to just kind of warm you up for that because I want to speak about it more in the future because that area is right next to wetland. It's on a wetland. It's a very, it's a one-way road. It's a lot of pedestrians, a lot of people walking their families and dogs. It just wouldn't be a good idea. So I'll talk about that another time. But thank you. That's all I would like to say this morning, and God bless you guys. And have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Zane. Last three speakers this morning, Sheila Simmons-Tribble, followed by Denise Holmes and Antoinette Davis. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sheila Simmons-Tribble, and I'm a resident of Hillsborough County, a member of HOPE, Hillsborough Organization for Progress and Equality. And I'm also the Chair of the Affordable Housing, HOPE Affordable Housing Committee, Monitoring Committee. I am here today to support the much-needed local HOPE funds of at least $10 million annually to create and rehab needed housing that's affordable for families and seniors with low and very low incomes. A few weeks ago, I saw many of you at the Uptown Sky ribbon cutting, and that was a firsthand appearance and show of the local HOPE funds. And so we know that it does work. A growing city cannot be successful if secure, affordable housing is only attainable to those of means. Think about all of the men and women who staff our hotels, who work in our restaurants, the paraprofessionals and support staff at our hospitals and schools, the clerical and administrative workers in the high-rise buildings here in downtown Tampa. Our county and our city ceases to thrive if the employees who make it to work have to commute 90 minutes paying for gasoline that's over, right now, $3.50 a gallon because they cannot afford to live closer to the city. According to the National Low Income Housing Coalition in East Tampa, and that is ZIP Code 33605, the minimum hourly wage required to rent a two-bedroom home is $26.35. The same study indicated that the renters with the lowest income face the greatest challenge in finding affordable housing. The average minimum-income wage worker at $11 per hour in the Tampa Bay area must work almost 92 hours per week. That's almost equivalent to a 2.3 full-time job to afford a one-bedroom rental home at the fair market rent. Please vote to approve at least $10 million for the Affordable Housing Fund in the 2024 budget and give hope to all of the residents in Hillsborough County so they can live and work in this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Denise Holmes, followed by Antoinette Davis. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. My name is Denise Holmes, and I live in the 33617 ZIP Code. And I'm a part of the InVision Resolution Movement. When considering the data, we could all conclude that housing is a significant driver of health. Access to stable, safe, and affordable housing has a positive impact on both physical and mental health. Studies have shown that improving access to high-quality affordable housing is associated with improvements in life expectancy and reductions in chronic disease and hospitalizations, which, by the way, saves money in treating people in the emergency room. When someone is housed, they are better able to assess healthcare, education, jobs, food, and other resources that impact health. High housing costs can cause people to skip routine healthcare visits and ultimately defer needed medical care due to cost. Foregoing medical care can result in worsening chronic health conditions, negative health outcomes, and increased use of expensive healthcare services. Increasing access to housing, especially affordable housing, can improve community health and increase healthcare savings for all. I ask the Board to consider the information that our Hills County Health Department provides or research the data and intersecting of housing and health to inform your decisions on affordable housing. Housing is healthcare. We appreciate your leadership on this very important issue, and thank you, and God bless all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Final speaker this morning, Antoinette Davis. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Antoinette Davis, living in the 33592 ZIP Code, member of the InVision Resolution Movement and a member of HOPE. Access to affordable housing is a major impact on health. The U.S. Department of Health and Health Services recognizes the importance of affordable housing and has prioritized it as one of the Healthy People 2030 objectives. They have stated, when families have to spend large amounts of their income on housing, this may not be leaving them enough money to pay for other things that we all need to be healthy and for our well-being, things such as healthy food and healthcare. The worry that people experience when trying to afford housing is linked to increased stress and mental health problems and an increased risk of disease. Investing in affordable housing can help reduce the proportion that families that spend more than 30% of their income on housing is experiencing. Implementing evidence-based housing initiatives, like building more affordable housing and expanding tenant-based housing voucher programs, can improve health in our community. It was stated before that housing is healthcare, but affordability is a problem for many in our community. We thank you in advance for your leadership on this issue. God bless you and have a good day.
Thank you, ma'am. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent?
Second.
Motion Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Aye.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Bonnie, I think it's right on time.
Perfect timing. Yes, our first item is our first public hearing is Item D1. This is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the proposed Plan Year 23 Action Plan, and Cheryl Howell will present this item. No public speakers have signed up for this item.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cheryl Howell, Assistant County Administrator, Equity and Community Impact, and I'm here today to to request the following: to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the proposed Plan Year 23 Annual Action Plan and substantial amendments for Plan Year 16 through Plan Year 2022 action plans. To close the public comment period that began on June 22, 2023, and adopt the Plan Year 23 Annual Action Plan and substantial amendments to the action plan for Plan Year 16 through 2022 for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Authorizing the Chair or the County Administrator to execute upon arrival to grant agreements with HUD and HUD-rerequired certifications related to the funding as needed and approved by the County Attorney's Office. The estimated fiscal impact of the Plan Year 23 Annual Action Plan adoption is $11,425,395. The FY24 budget will include $7,397,825 in community development block grant, $3,395,920 in the home partnership program, and $632,650 in the emergency solution grant funds. These figures are estimates based on the Plan Year 23 allocations from HUD. This is a public hearing.
All right.
And on your screen, you'll see the estimates and the projects for this plan as well for community block grant, home, and for the ESG programs.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to the item? If not, that closes the public comment portion of the public hearing. Can we have a motion? Motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. The no question to comments. Please record your vote.
Aye.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next public hearing is Item D2. This is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution establishing the stormwater management non-advalorm assessment rates and the assessment role. Josh Bellotti with Engineering and Operations is here for this item.
Good morning, Josh.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations Department. This is the annual public hearing to set the stormwater non-advalorm assessment rates and the assessment role for calendar year 2023. So in introducing this item, I just want to briefly review some of the highlights of the budget workshop that we had on June 8 regarding the stormwater program. The county's vision is an effective stormwater management system that preserves and protects property and minimizes the risk and impact of flooding in our community. Maintaining and preserving our stormwater infrastructure is critical, and the benefits include improved water quality, customer service, and ability to respond to storm events such as hurricanes and tropical storms. Due to its large size, the county has a lot of stormwater infrastructure that needs to be maintained and preserved in order for the system to function. These include nearly 8 million feet of buried stormwater pipes, which if laid end-to-end, would stretch nearly 1,500 miles from here to Maine. We have over 7 million feet of open stormwater ditches, thousands of ponds and drainage structures, and 40 stormwater pumping stations across the county that are critical to prevent community flooding. This infrastructure continues to age and deteriorate over time, and many of our stormwater assets are at or beyond their expected lifespan. The goal is to be proactive in this replacement cycle, but many times, we end up being reactive in dealing with emergency failures or collapse. At the June 8 workshop, we discussed some of the challenges that we face with the stormwater system. And the first, as I just mentioned, is aging and failing infrastructure. Second is the resources required to keep up with the growing needs of the stormwater system. And the third item is that the stormwater program is not self-sufficient. The assessment revenue is supplemented with an additional $20 million each year from the general fund. So where we are today with the stormwater rates was actually set in motion back in 2019 when the BOCC adopted a new tiered rate system for the stormwater assessment. Based on impervious area, it set an annual rate of $76.36 for the medium, single-family tier, where most of the residential properties fall, and approved a plan for incrementally increasing rates over the next five years. The Board held the rates flat for two years during the pandemic and just last summer adopted the first of the incremental increases of $5 annually, taking the annual assessment from $76.36 to $81.43. And so this year's proposal is another incremental $5 a year increase, taking the median annual assessment to $86.49. Want to take just a brief moment to highlight some of the positive impacts that have resulted from this plan that was established in 2019. Since then, the county has been able to allocate more resources towards maintenance activities, cleaning 88 miles of drainage ditches, completing over 92,000 miles of street sweeping, and repairing over 36,000 feet of curb and gutter. We've also replaced nearly 200 stormwater pipe systems, over 31,000 feet of pipe, and designed and constructed 38 local neighborhood drainage improvement projects to alleviate flooding. The stormwater program currently has a total of $54.1 million in funding for FY23. This is comprised of $34.1 million received for the non-advalorm stormwater assessment, as well as $20 million from the general fund. About half of that total, as you can see, goes into day-to-day maintenance, things like street sweeping, cleaning ditches, repairing curb and gutters. $16 million towards replacing pipes and rehabbing pump stations, and the rest of neighborhood flood protection projects and water quality. And so with this year's incremental rate increase, the annual revenue is projected to increase by $2.6 million. And so the plan is to invest $2.1 million of that into the much-needed additional pipes and pipe replacements and pump station repairs, and half a million into additional drainage improvement projects. Compared to our neighboring cities and counties, Hillsborough County is towards the lower end of the pack in terms of annual stormwater assessments, illustrated by the yellow bar on the graph. And as you can see by the green line, that doesn't change much with the proposed incremental increase of $5 this year. In closing, this table illustrates the proposed rates that are included in the resolution that you have for adoption today. Note that we are required to hold public hearings each year for the Board to adopt the rate-setting resolution, and that these approved and planned incremental increases are needed to support and proceed with planned projects and avoid deferring repairs and maintenance. So again, the purpose of this public hearing is for the Board to adopt the resolution establishing the stormwater assessment rates and the assessment role for calendar year 2023. Written notices were mailed on July 7, 2023, to 6,282 property owners that will either receive the assessment for the first time or have it modified due to property modifications. This public hearing was duly noticed in the Tampa Bay Times on June 28, 2023. Those notices state that property owners have the right to file written objections. To date, Public Works has received no written objections to the 2023 stormwater assessment increase. Once these new rates are adopted, they will go into effect October 1. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and this is a public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Josh, for the presentation. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? If not, that closes the public hearing. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The $20 million supplemental from the general fund, that still is a part of this new rate. Okay.
Yes, it is.
Is there envisioning in the future where that wouldn't necessarily be the case if we continue to raise rates?
There's a possibility to have an update to the rate study done that might look at that, but that might have an effect on the assessments rates required to do that.
Very good. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wuestel.
Mr. Bellotti, I'm getting familiar with your work product, but have you taken every single avenue that you can think of to make sure that we could avoid any possible increases at this point?
Yes, I would say that we have. We've had rate study performed on the stormwater system, and that looks at all of those avenues.
You've considered every option that we could possibly avoid this, though, right? I'll move for approval.
Okay, a motion to approve, Commissioner Wuestel, second Commissioner Kemp and Cohen. If no other comments, please record your vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Josh. Well, I think we have a couple minutes. We can.
We do. We have a few minutes, so we can jump to the regular agenda. The first item is Item B1, and this is to submit a grant, a mega grant application for the Gibsonton Area Transportation Project. John Patrick is here with Community and Infrastructure Planning to present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. So yes, the agenda item, as we wrote it, it was to submit a grant application for the mega grant to the federal government for three different projects. Since we published the agenda item, several things have happened, and there are a lot of changes that has happened beyond our control, actually. And thank you, Commissioner Michael Owen, for jumping in and helping us with that. So we, we, so just to briefly give you what this mega grant is, we might have lost an opportunity this year, but definitely we have to keep this in mind as we move further. Mega grant is actually a grant that was was part of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act that was passed in 2021. So the project to qualify for this grant, the project has to be at least $100 million. So these are large projects and should have a regional benefit. That is the, that is a qualifying factor for this grant. The grant grants and the grant actually covers about 60% of the project, so 40% has to be from other funds. The plan was to go in with the Florida Department of Transportation, equal partners, 20% from DOT and 20% from Hillsborough County. That was the plan. Unfortunately, the central office, Florida Department of Transportation Central Office, decided to support two different projects, one from Jacksonville and one from Miami this year, so we are, we would not have the opportunity to apply. We do have, I should clarify that, we do have the opportunity to apply, but we will have to put all 40% of that money. So that's, that's a large amount of money considering the projects that we were looking at. So what were the projects? There are three projects that we were considering. At the end of the thing, I think we have other options as well. We will go through that option. So the three projects that we were considering to go in partnership with DOT was I-75 Gibsonton Drive Interchange. That's a required project. There's a lot of congestion in that place. The other one was Gibsonton Drive Widening itself, four to six lane widening, that's a county road, and the pedestrian bridge or a trail bridge over Ala Faya that would extend the South Coast Greenway Trail over the Ala Faya River. Gibsonton Drive project by itself is about $44 million. That's the engineering estimate today, as of today. And the trail is another $10 million construction cost itself. So the total project cost is $139 million. The potential contribution from the county would have been $27 million, which would primarily go for right-of-way acquisition for Gibsonton Drive Widening. The estimate for right-of-way at this point of time, DOT is conducting the PDNE study. The estimate is about $19 million. So of the $27 million, the majority of would would have gone to Gibsonton Drive Widening. The source of funding was in the, was potential source was CIT dollars in the later years, FY25, 26, most likely it's 26 FY26 dollars for this contribution. DOT, in partnership with DOT, DOT was, is doing the PDNE study on Gibsonton Drive. There are the three projects, they would be constructed by DOT. They have programmed $5 million already for design of the Gibsonton I-75 interchange. I don't have to really explain about the benefits of this project. It's really about the quality of life. The, the port has a lot of truck traffic through that. It is a regionally significant interchange congestion relief. If you have driven Gibsonton Drive, it is a, it backs up miles both in the morning and in the evening. So these are good projects, and Gibsonton Drive has been identified as a high injury network, top 20 in the county. Disaster relief, hurricane evacuation, it is an important point of on an exit. So it's a, it's a multimodal project that we were thinking of packaging together, together as, as combined. So, so one of the things that has happened is because DOT has, has taken this point that they would not support a project going through, that means we will not have that part of the funding. So another option would be for you to consider this morning would be to work with the staff, work with District 7 on finding other options for funding this project, the 137 million dollar total project. Still, we would require a local contribution of $27 million, potential revenue that would be needed in FY25 or 26. That is what, and primarily we are going to use that on Gibsonton Drive. Gibsonton Drive, as I mentioned, by itself would be $44 million. Our contribution would be only $27 million. So that would be our contribution primarily for right-of-way acquisition for widening of Gibsonton Drive. That's for your consideration this morning, Commissioners.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your patience with me on this the last few weeks. You know, Board, this is one of those, those marquee things. If we can get done, that'll be a marquee accomplishment for this Board. What I'd like to envision is the Leroy Selman extension and then this Gibsonton Drive corridor being, being upgraded. And I think this is such a, a great project, and there were some ups and downs with this, like a roller coaster for me. But I'm very, very encouraged that there are other ways to skin this cat. And I also wanted to clarify, that 27 million from us, we can get grants for those monies, right?
Yes, absolutely. We can continue to apply for other grants to supplement this fund.
And I think that's important, the bang for our buck on a project, a mega project like this, if FDOT finds a different way to skin the cat rather than using any of the three grants, I think is not just a no-brainer, it's something we have to do. So I want to make a motion. I move to direct staff with partnership of FDOT to submit for any of the three federal grants that may be available and/or any other type of financial mechanisms which may accomplish the same objectives in order to fund the Gibsonton Area Transportation Project as outlined in B1.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve by, or motion directing staff by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Kemp and, and Cohen. Any other comments on the motion? All right, please record your vote.
Commissioner, I have my hand up. I just.
I'm sorry. Yeah, well, this is difficult to see it here. I'm sorry, Commissioner Cohen.
Just wanted to say that I completely agree with Commissioner Owen, and this is very, very badly needed on Gibsonton Drive, much of it used to be in my district, some of it still is, and I think it's really a no-brainer to move forward on this.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Cohen, for your comments. No other comments? Please accord your vote.
Aye.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bynum of 1015.
Thank you. Well done on timing again, Commissioners. The next item is Item F2. This is at 1015. This is Commissioner Myers' item, and I'd like to know Commissioner Myers, if you wanted to give a brief intro, but is to receive an update on the Tri-County Metropolitan Planning Organization merger concept.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. My brief update is to ask Ms. Alden to give the report for this, and then I'll come back and make some comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm Beth Alden. I'm the Director of the Hillsborough Transportation Planning Organization, and I have the pleasure of working directly with five of you who serve on the TPO Board. Hillsborough County is well represented on the TPO Board, and so several of you are familiar with this topic. But this is a topic that is very significant to all of the local governments in our community. It contemplates dissolving the existing TPO and creating a new one at the tri-county level. And so it's appropriate for all of our local governments to have a chance to talk about it and about the significance to this organization in particular, an incorporated Hillsborough County, which is the single largest municipality by population in the Tampa Bay region. So briefly, what is a metropolitan planning organization? It is essentially a policy board of local officials representing a metropolitan area. It's responsible for setting priorities, for collaborative investments in significant transportation projects. As you just saw in the discussion of the Gibsonton Area Transportation Projects, it often takes partnerships and a package of different funding opportunities to deliver significant transportation projects in a community. And so that big-picture conversation, how we work together, happens at an MPO level and then is carried forward in collaboration by each of the member governments. Currently, there are three POs serving the Tampa Bay region. Tampa, Hillsborough County obviously served by the Hillsborough TPO, Pinellas by Forward Pinellas, and Pasco County is hosted by the Pasco County Government. We are designated as part of one transportation management area under the census, and we are all members of the SunCoast Transportation Planning Alliance. Under the federal regulations, it is acceptable to have more than one MPO serving a transportation management area if there is a coordinated process for doing planning and prioritization, and that takes place currently through the SunCoast Transportation Planning Alliance. In 2023, the Florida Legislature passed a bill directing the POs of Hillsborough, Pasco, and Pinellas to provide a report to the Legislature exploring consolidation and specifically identifying the benefits, costs, and process for consolidating into a single MPO. And that's specifically how we come to be talking about this topic today. This is a topic that has been discussed on many previous occasions. In fact, there was an extensive study that was funded by the Florida Legislature about five years ago and conducted by TBARDA, which hired a national research firm. So there have been a lot of pros and cons identified over the years of discussion. Pros include competing more effectively potentially with other regions for funding. So it's often pointed at MetroPlan Orlando, for example, which is a tri-county MPO and which includes local elected officials from both sides of the aisle who work together on transportation priorities that the group has identified. And in advocating for those priorities at the state level, at the federal level, they will often send whichever representative, whichever local leader has the best relationship with the folks at the state and federal level to try to bring home those dollars. Cons that have been raised, concerns about risk of smaller communities and neighborhoods losing influence, how is that public engagement carried forward? How are smaller cities, which currently have voting seats and probably won't in the future, going to be represented? Are we going to be focusing more on major highways and less on safety and access and good repair, which has been a major focus for us here in Hillsborough? And questions about how do we effectively coordinate land use and transportation? Right now, both the Hillsborough TPO and the Pinellas MPO are hosted by agencies that are responsible for long-range land use planning. Of course, Hillsborough is hosted by the Planning Commission, which drafts the comprehensive plans for all four local governments. And so there's a lot of synergy in that the staff make sure that everything that comes forward to the TPO is consistent with those comprehensive plans that are drafted for all the local governments. So the question that is in front of the Hillsborough TPO right now is signing a memorandum of understanding with the other two POs to officially investigate, forming a tri-county MPO. The memorandum of understanding would not commit the POs to merging, but would identify a target date of creating that tri-county MPO by July of 2027. The MOU also lays out some guiding principles for how that investigation will move forward. So for example, the apportionment of the governing board should be proportionate to representation, which I think is of the utmost importance for an incorporated Hillsborough County in particular as the largest single-population municipality, as I mentioned. Some other guiding principles, we need to have a balance for local and regional needs. We need to be sustainable in terms of operational funding for the new organization. Right now, all three of the POs are hosted by the counties, and so there's that, that strong kind of financial backing behind the planning grants that support the POs. If we become independent, we're going to have to find another way to do that. Outreach to our local jurisdictions, both in terms of public engagement and public comment opportunities throughout this process, and also formally seeking feedback from all the local governments, as I'm doing this morning. And looking at our existing staff, wanting to make sure that you all continue to have folks with that specialized expertise in the federal regulations that keep the transportation funds flowing to this region, making sure that those folks continue to be available throughout this multi-year transition process. So there are a lot of decisions still to be made. None of those decisions have been made yet. The proposed process would be that over the next couple of years, each of these decision points comes to the tri-county group, which is the Tampa Bay Transportation Management Area Leadership Group. There are three of our TPO Board members serving on that group, and then the recommendations of that group would be bought back to each MPO for approval. So I'm not going to go through all of these decision points. There is a lot to consider and work through, but we can take it step by step through this timeline. And we are seeking feedback from the public right now with a survey that is designed to be user-friendly and not get into the weeds on federal regulations, but seek your priorities for how decision-making should be handled for transportation in this region. You can use this QR code. You can also find a link to it on the, the Regional Alliance webpage, it's up front and center, at suncoasttpa.org. That stands for SunCoast Transportation Planning Alliance.org, suncoasttpa.org. And the survey is available through August 20. And finally, I am here for your feedback and comments to bring back to the Hillsborough TPO as it considers signing this memorandum of understanding. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for your presentation. Commissioner Myers.
And thank you, Beth, for giving us that overview of your report. I move to receive the tri-county report and that Hillsborough County submits to the study by December 31 on the benefits, the costs, and process of merging to the transportation planning organization known as a TPO as soon as possible.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Owen. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, with the legislation that's bound us to this, what if we didn't sign the MOU? What, what, what happens then? I mean, what would be your, I mean, not to quote Harry Cohen, he said last time with the TPO, I mean, you're either at the dinner table or your dinner, you know?
You can probably.
And so I guess I'm just trying to figure out what choices we have in a scenario where we don't sign the MOU.
So the MOU, I think, is an indication to the Legislature that we're willing to work with them and we're willing to talk about this. And I think there are a lot of opportunities to make this a positive change for our community if it's well-designed. And I think it's going to be well-designed if you all are part of this decision-making process, and signing this MOU will give you that seat at the table.
Yeah, and I think that's really important. And, you know, what this is about to me is how do we get more? How do we, because I guess Orlando, those, that tri-county area was the big guys on the block, and we would be number one if.
We would.
Yeah. And, and historically, that does impact, could you answer that, allude to that, the ability to get grants historically?
Sure. So we've heard several times from District 7 Secretary David Gwynn that when he is in Tallahassee. in Tallahassee and advocating for our priority projects, you know, he's there with the District 5 Secretary from Orlando, who is bringing forward, here's a single list of high-priority projects from the Orlando area. And Secretary Gwynn is bringing forward, here's Hillsborough's list, here's Pinellas' list, here's Pasco's list, here's Hernando Citrus's list. And that the Metro Plan list is given a lot more credence in Tallahassee.
Great. Well, thank you for your report. I'm in support of this. Thank you.
I thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Okay. And we are talking about the MOU, but actually what was talked about was almost like a fait accompli, like that if there's a MOU, there will be this merger. And, I mean, I just want to make sure that that's, you know, understood, that that is not the definite outcome, and there isn't any legislative order. There's not been a change in what the Legislature is doing or how this is done. To address that Orlando, it just keeps being brought up. There is one city that is part of that TPO, one major city. There are very few twin cities across the country. And I'll say again, because I discovered all this as I was looking into this in the past, there's never been, well, I guess they have told of a couple marriages of MPOs. Now, they were originally just set out this way, and that's the way that Orlando got set up. It was just a major city with two small urban areas in Osceola and Seminole County that join it, and that's why it's like that. It's very different here, because we have two major cities, twin cities, and they are separated by a huge body of water. The only urbanized area together is right there at Oldsmar, right over between them. So I just, I'd like to point that out, because actually, the biggest MPO is Miami-Dade, and the second is Broward. And they won't surrender that to merge, even though it would make total sense, because between Broward, Palm Beach, and Miami-Dade, it's just like a expressway of pavement between the three, a runway. And they won't do that, and neither will many small counties in the Panhandle. They don't, you know, they will not do this. We, again, are 1.5 million people in Hillsborough County and growing, 950,000 in Pinellas, and it's been that way more or less for 20 years. And as they've said, they almost don't need any other projects there, because they're as pavement out as they could possibly be, and very outlier, in that they're already across the country. There's almost no place as dense and developed as Pinellas County. So with all that said, it's one of the few times today that I've agreed with Jim Davidson when he was speaking, and he just said that this, you know, merger is not a good idea for Hillsborough County, and we would just be far less unrepresented in this picture. There's been times that, there's been also opposition in the past from Pinellas and Pasco Counties, but I'll just say, these transportation planning organizations, once again, were created in response to the destruction and pollution in local communities because of highway building. Interstate construction paved over and destroyed low-income and minority neighborhoods. Here in Tampa, it took away a lot of our economic value when you fill all these communities, you take them down. You hurt our opportunities in the city of Tampa. And I speak our opportunities as a county, our opportunities as a region, for the economic development in those areas. That did happen right here in Tampa when 275 and I-4 were originally constructed. The central purpose of the MPOs, which were set up in the late '70s, early '80s, and their boards, is public participation to avoid mistakes of the past and mitigate harm caused by transportation projects. The region gets a certain amount of funding for the three MPOs. What is the funding for Hillsborough, like this year?
The operational funding will refer to transportation improvements. Transportation improvements is about 20 million-ish.
And that's our federal money?
Mm-hmm.
And that's not going to change. What we'll do is be just combining the three, and that's, you know, not going to change. We've already got one district, our District 7 of our FDOT. So, and as we said, there's been much said about how we get all this more money, but the region gets a certain amount of funding for our three MPOs, including the TPO. It currently is divided into three counties to use as their boards and agencies see fit. The funding will not increase, because we merge with Pasco and Pinellas. Nevertheless, there is a drive to merge. There's been a drive to merge forever. There's been eternal studies. I believe it's the wrong choice for Hillsborough County. I could go out at much more length about this and have done so. The Hillsborough TPO board had gone, just a few years ago, on record, in unanimous opposition in the past. Pasco, Pinellas have also at various times expressed opposition for a number of reasons. However, if a merger does happen, three key points that I think we must think about. I know the MOU, and I guess federal law, says that we must be represented by population. That's really important, because we are more than, we are about half the population, probably will be more than half the population in the future as we grow, or that we're just growing so, so much. The board must be made up of elected officials to best ensure accountability to the public. The board must be constructed to represent Hillsborough's larger population, as I said, and I believe the agency's office must be in Hillsborough. This is where most of the people are. It's where a great deal of the road building will happen. I think it would be just absurd to put the office in Pinellas, when that county and roads are largely built out, residents don't face the difficult decisions Hillsborough's communities and neighborhoods will face. Again, I am opposed to the merger. I don't think it's a good thing for Hillsborough County, or, and I don't think it's a good thing for our funding. But if we go forward, we need to be smart about it, and at least make sure that we do those three things.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You know, reasonable people, I think, can disagree on whether this is a good or bad idea. The bottom line is, is that we should sign onto the memorandum, because if we don't, we're going to be left out of the discussion entirely. And I think I said at the TPO, if you're not at the table, you're going to get served for dinner, and I do think that's the case here. There are, there are a couple additional points, though, to make. The first is to reiterate what Commissioner Kemp just said about apportionment. It is so important that our population be fairly represented on any type of regional board, and I think that, that particular issue of how many seats go to who is going to be very much at the heart of whether or not this is something that can be supported or not. But the more important thing is that one of the reasons that is constantly given for this is that our region doesn't speak with one voice, and that only regions that speak with one voice are able to capture state and federal funds effectively. And I don't think anyone should believe that changing the structure is necessarily going to paper over or somehow bridge the differences that we have substantively on what is the best type of transportation to go forward. People in the region disagree as much about what the appropriate ways to move forward are as people do in Hillsborough County. So, you know, we're still going to have a situation where rural, suburban, and urban dwellers are not necessarily aligned in what they view our priorities being. But that said, I think that we should sign onto the memo and definitely be part of the discussion, not absent from it.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Wollstel?
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen brought up a good point, Ms. Alden. When I got onto the TPO, I pointed out to the TPO that, at least by a soft count, 10 out of the 16 members all lived in and strongly represented the city of Tampa, who only represents 22% of the population. So in this agreement, if it moved forward, could it be, I'm not sure about the nuances, the legalities that can be handled, but can we make sure that it's handled, that it acknowledges duplicity in terms of if the elected official is, all represent one small area that they must be living in the other unincorporated areas, to make sure that people are proportionally, that word keeps being said, proportional representation? Could we handle in this agreement that we proportionally represent the unincorporated area that represents 71% to 72% of the county?
Excuse me. You can, of course, during the negotiation process, for the inter-local agreement, add any specificity that you want to there, but you don't actually need to have the agreement of the other local governments to have a policy here at this board of who you send to represent you.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm just going to say, I'm not on TPO now, but I've been on the MPO for most of my time in office, and this is, this issue's come up a number of times. I've always opposed it. I oppose it now, but it doesn't sound like we have much of a choice, and frankly, I don't want to be a part of dinner. So with that, we've had a motion to approve by Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Owen. Please record your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda voted no. All right. Thank you. Bonnie, I know we've got a 10:30 time cert, but you wanted to pick up...
If I could, if we could go to item B2, we do have several representatives from the Sheriff's Office here, and I'd really hate to keep them waiting any longer. So if we could, we have item B2. This is to approve of contracts for sale for purchase of real property. This will be used for both the Sheriff's Office and for emergency management. And so while Chief Deputy St. John is here, and we appreciate the representatives to be here, and Chief Jones, John Mueller will go through this item. Thank you.
Good morning, John.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. John Mueller, Director for Facilities Management and Real Estate Services. Just briefly have HTV put up the slide, so you can take note of the very strategic location of this acquisition, literally adjacent to the Sheriff's complex and a very close distance to our PSOC in the Falkenburg corridor. So I'll be brief. This is a purchase of a 60,000-square-foot building on an 8.4 acre site. The timing of this property aligns with both immediate emergency management needs while our own warehouse and PSOC renovations are being built, but also aligns with the Sheriff's upcoming needs for training and academy space. The property is out of the flood zone in Zone X, has backup power generators, and a large perfect lot making it, making it ready for use immediately. Moreover, the sale of this is timed in a market where we have very fair pricing as it prays value. I can state the obvious, but building this as new construction, even if we could find a more perfect site, would cost more. I do want to note that the sellers, CTP Buffalo Investments, NJL, they're broker, I do want to take note of their assistance through this process. I think they saw the long-term vision that we see with this property, and of course, credit Chief Deputy St. John, who, for the past year and a half, has, I think, been keeping an eye on this site and brought this initiative forward to us. Lastly, the funds to purchase this property are included in the board's upcoming fiscal year '24 to '29 capital program. That has to be considered for a final approval in September, so obviously, this contract is contingent upon that funding. And I'm available for any questions, as are the Chiefs and the Sheriff's Office and Anne Marie.
All right. Thank you, John. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this actually came in a little bit lower than what we thought, didn't it, Bonnie?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Well, that's great news, huh? Well, I'll move for approval.
Second.
We got a motion to approve. Commissioner Owen, take Commissioner Myers. Chief Deputy, you want to say anything? Are you good?
I think we're good.
Okay. Less is more. All right. No comments. Please record your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. We can now move to item E1. This is your 10:30 item. This is our special appearance by Santiago Corata. The President and CEO of Visit Tampa Bay to present their annual, sorry, semi-annual activity report.
Morning, Santiago.
Good morning. Good morning, Honorable Commissioners. It's such a pleasure to appear before you. Thank you to our county administrator, Greg Horwiddell, Ron Barton, and the team. Thank you to all of you. What I'm showing you today is not possible without your support, and I plan on breaking all kinds of speeding records, so I'm glad the sheriffs are leaving, so I don't get arrested for a presentation done too fast. Suffice it to say, we're on record-setting pace, and all the numbers are reflecting that. Through the second quarter, half a year, and I can tell you, through the third quarter, hotel revenues were up over 16%, and that coincides with the bed tax as well. So I'm in charge, so I get to move through all these very quickly. You have these. Again, these are just examples of how well we're doing compared to prior quarters, how we're doing with the competition. Again, we are where we're supposed to be, or better. Of the top 25 markets, we've had the most RevPAR growth, revenue per available room growth, in the country. We're number one. So again, we ought to be very, very proud of where we are. You're seeing these. You have this deck. If you have any questions, please reach out to me offline. We calculate economic impact of all of these groups during the second quarter. It's a huge number. Third quarter, if you've been watching this summer, is a huge economic impact, groups after groups after groups. In fact, we have mathematicians in town this week, followed by dermatologists, and then the ancient Egyptian order of noble mystic shrines. So we are on a roll this summer. And again, a lot of groups actualized during the second quarter. And what I really want to hone in on this, and I don't have control of the video, is us in the wild, doing the county's business out of market. Next slide. Our digital campaigns are doing extremely well. Big number, 118 times the return on the ad spend, which is huge. And then the next video is us taking over New York, and then I'm just about done. Our UK campaigns are doing great. Germany campaigns are doing great here. Some of the collateral that you would see in Germany, in, obviously, German Q2 public relations, you know, hitting on all cylinders. Recent awards that our county has won throughout the country for our marketing initiatives and our campaigns, you see there, as well as local, and that is it. I have somebody timing me back in the office under five minutes.
4:18.
Be exact. It's the best thing I've done all day.
I got to tell you, I asked Santiago to go fast, because that, he condensed probably a 15-minute presentation, 4 minutes and 18 seconds, so. And I know it's hard for him, because he loves to tell the great story and of the fantastic job that Visit Tampa Bay is doing, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do for us. You're on the road with us. You provide our funding. You're there with us when we're pitching conventions. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Wollstel?
Thank you. Mr. S...
Mr. Santiago, I just have one question. I did read your slides, I noted the thespian crowd also that generated some revenue for the county.
Yes, sir.
Those tourist development taxes are something that I've been slowly unwinding, there's a lot of different buckets of money. It turns out, though, that that money could also be used to improve sidewalks and roads to my current understanding.
Yes, sir, as long as they're tied to tourism development, and let's, and I'll use Orlando, since Orlando was mentioned a couple times this morning, right? Universal Studios is adding another theme park. There are impacts to transportation networks there, right? Off-ramps, streets.
You're leading into my next question.
So if there's an improvement that is a tourism-related, and there's a nexus between tourism and that improvement, you can do some studies and actually look to fund whatever improvements are related to that infrastructure, major hotel, major theme park, major attraction. There's conversations around the country, around the state, I'm sorry, about those dollars being used for that kind of infrastructure improvement. But a study has to be done, and there has to be a connection to the tourism industry because it's the tourism development tax.
Would you consider the West Shore Alliance District the hotel hub for much of the tourism?
It's a major hub, downtown and the West Shore District are major tourism hubs. That's where you have the largest percentage of hotel rooms that are related to conventions. Now, we have four sub-markets, so East County, East Tampa has its own set of hotels, we've got North Tampa Bush, some of that data is in your report that I filed today. So yes, West Shore, obviously, when we have large, large conventions that we can't accommodate just downtown, they spread to West Shore, as well as other sub-markets, sir.
Very insightful, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, don't go anywhere, Santiago.
Are you counting these against my 418?
No, 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 no.
Because, you know, I promised you, right? Four, you know, under five.
I'm gonna be brief. Just want to say thank you for all you do, and continue to market Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa. When others are pulling out of Florida, we still continue to invite them to come to Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa, and thank you for making that work.
Thank you, thank you so much. Great team back at the office, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you, and great, fresh, bright job, very, very good, I can see how effective all this is. But since the question was asked, I'm just gonna ask, these tourist dollars, and I've asked before about this, also being used for transit in areas where there's great tourism?
Again, you've got to be very, very careful to read the state statute, and also how it interacts with our county ordinances and our county contract with us and others, and whether there's a justifiable tourism relationship. And again, it needs to be looked at, it needs to be studied, and you have to have that nexus. But I would suggest that, you know, our county attorney, look at the state statute to ensure that we're in compliance for, with what those dollars can be spent on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, Commissioner Myers, since you referenced it, I want to say, I participated in a video along with a lot of other folks that Visit Tampa Bay can use just to highlight how open and welcoming Tampa and Hillsborough County is to all folks. We want their business irrespective of who they are and what convention it is, we want them to come here. So they're doing a great job on that, and Santiago, just keep up the great work.
Thank you.
And just one question I have, did you cut your hair for us today, or?
Yes, I actually did, it's my, it's my once-a-year summer cut.
I'm just jealous, so anyway, great job, keep up the great work, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Do we need a motion to accept the report?
Seven to zero.
All right, motion to accept, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers, please record your vote.
Yeah.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item E2, this is a special appearance by Rob Higgins, who's the Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission, and he too is going to talk about the exciting things happening for amateur sports.
Good morning, Rob.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Four minutes is a very tough gauntlet to lay in front of me, but I will do my best. I always start with a thank you, certainly, we truly appreciate all of your support and vision in supporting our community to be the absolute best sports tourism capital in the entire world. I'll start off with a great event that took place in April, the 2023 NCAA Men's Frozen Four, it was our third time hosting since 2012. It was the 75th anniversary of the event, and we actually finished third all-time in terms of attendance, it was the highest TV rating in 11 years, and the event goes back out to bid here this fall, so we're positioned very well on it in tandem with our partners at not only Visit Tampa Bay, but also Vennix Sports Group. Also in April, we hosted the Savannah Bananas, it's one of the hottest sports properties in all of the world. We had back-to-back sold-out nights at Steinbrenner Field, it literally sold out in minutes, and we're already in discussion with them to be a part of their world tour for next year. On the horizon, we've got the NCAA Division One Women's Volleyball Championship, December 14th and 17th, I know the slide says 16th, but I'll talk about that 17th in just a second. Tickets go on sale later on this month, it'll be our first time hosting in 14 years, so a great opportunity to host one of the crown jewels of all of women's college sports. But not only does the season end here at Amalie Arena in Hillsborough County, it also starts here. We have four great programs that'll take the court at Amalie to kick off the college volleyball season, August 25th, and then the 26th at the Ylangling Center, Penn State, Florida, Georgia Tech, and USF, all led by female head coaches, and we're really excited to continue to showcase our commitment to women's sports. Youth and amateur sports is a huge part of what we do on an each-and-every-weekend basis. We've got a couple of feasibility studies taking place right now that are wrapping up this month, that you'll see reports on related to both the indoor sports complex as well as baseball softball complex. And then in terms of the, some of the things that have taken place recently, just an incredible second quarter that has happened, we're actually have generated 125,000 room nights through the first two quarters. Quarter three, it was amazing as well, 32 events that are continuing to produce a tremendous amount of room nights. And then I'll just wrap with an important note related to the Hillsborough County Tournament Sportsplex. You know, we did a feasibility study for it before it was approved, and shovel was put in the ground, and through four and a half years, when you compare the results to the consultant's report before it was built, we've actually exceeded 27,000 more room nights than that third-party consultant predicted, which is 18% higher. So we're really proud, again, and grateful for you guys continuing to support the Sports Commission and all that we do, and trying to generate both economic and social impact for the community. Any questions?
Well, Rob, I just want to say, you're doing an unbelievable job, I'm glad that you highlighted the Sportsplex. Last year, I'm going off memory, but I believe there were 47 events that took place there, nine of which had international participants, and I think the room nights exceeded 87 or 90,000, and as Rob said, just shattered the projections that we had going into this, it's been just an unbelievable success, and most of that is thanks to Rob and his team. So Rob, keep up the great work, and please get Savannah Bananas back. I attended one of those nights, and it was, it was amazing. It's, if you're not familiar with it, go on YouTube, it's baseball slash entertainment, and it's just an incredible event, so we need to definitely get them back.
We will do our best, for sure.
So no other comments, just having a motion to oversee the report.
Second.
Second Commissioner Myers, please record your vote.
Aye.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. I was at Savannah Bananas, too, and there's no words, and to see all the kids participating was incredible. Our next item is item G1, this is at 11 o'clock. Commissioner Hagan, you had asked for a report on the Live Local Act, and so while Ms. Howell and Adam Gormley are coming up, perhaps you'd like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you. Bonnie, remember, I brought this up to the board and asked for staff to come back because Senate Bill 102, otherwise called Live Local Act, is one of the most impacting land use policies to come out of the Florida Legislature in decades. As I understand it, legislation was born out of desire to increase opportunities to build more affordable housing. There are positive aspects to the bill, as was mentioned by a speaker this morning, but unfortunately, the bill outlines an approach that effectively circumvents the review processes afforded local government and also sidesteps public engagement. Under the conditions laid out in the policy, it's very possible that a builder could go directly from land purchase to permitting. Now, in my time on the board, sure doesn't surprise you that I've been extremely pro-growth, but I'd like to think in a smart, planned, and logical way, and this bill sets a lot of that aside. Our citizens and their representatives' ability to design and grow their communities has been fundamentally compromised. This bill reaches even further than residential design, it will impact planning for infrastructure, public utilities, transportation, economic development, public safety, as well as it will affect the county financially. Now, there's much confusion surrounding the bill, it has communities across Florida trying to figure it out. I know, I've read several articles about Pasco County and Pinellas County, they've got significant concerns, and so that's why I just asked staff to provide the board with a better understanding of the bill. So I think Cheryl will go first, and then I believe Adam has some comments also, so with that.
Good morning, good morning, everyone. My name is Cheryl Howell, and I am the Assistant County Administrator for Equity and Community Impact. We're here today to bring you an update on SB 102, which is the Live Local Act. This act was spearheaded by Senator Passademo with the Senate President from the Naples area. Today, we will cover, today we will cover three areas, the tax incentives and exemptions for developers, preemptions in the Live Local Act, and land use tools that's included in this act. There are three separate property tax exemptions. There's the nonprofit land used for affordable housing with 99-year ground lease, the missing middle property tax exemption, and the local option affordable housing tax exemption. The nonprofit tax exemption is mandated through the Live Local Act. This property tax exemption applies to land owned entirely by the nonprofit and must be leased for a minimum of 99 years, and is predominantly used to provide affordable housing to households up to 120% median family income. The missing middle is also mandated through this act. It provides property tax exemption to newly constructed multifamily developments that have more than 70 affordable housing units for households up to 120% annual median income. This exemption has a tiered exemption level that allows 75% exemption for units set aside for families, 80% to 120% AMI, and 100% exemption for units set aside for families below 80% AMI. And finally, the nonprofit local option exemption. This is not mandated, but does allow local government to allow tax exemptions to nonprofit-owned developments that contain at least 50 or more units with at least 20% of the units set aside for family at or below 60% median family income. Property exemptions are allowed based on the percentage of affordability. Next, we will review the preemption in the Live Local Act. We will cover the use of publicly-owned land, the prohibition of rent control, and land use. Florida currently has a surplus land law that requires city and county to publish the list every three years, and those are identified properties for, that's appropriate for affordable housing. Once they're identified, they have to be placed on the list, and they must be used for affordable housing. The Live Local Act requires the local government to make the list available on its website now, and so we're currently working with the real estate department to ensure that it's up and on the website by October 1st. The act expanded the entities to include surplus lands for all dependent special districts as well, such as CRA, Water and Soil Districts, and Port Authorities, and it's not limited to that, so there's a huge expansion with this. Staff will continue to work on these issues as the state smoothes out its process as well. So everything is not smoothed out at the state, but we will continually stay engaged with them. And now I will turn it over to my colleague, Adam Gormley, to discuss the land use issues.
Morning, Adam.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley with Hillsborough County Development Services. Going to address the land use preemptions in the Live Local Act. The Live Local Act created a new section in Florida statutes, it's 125.01055 subsection 7, and essentially what this provision does is it preempts the county, local government, from zoning and comp plan control of qualifying affordable housing projects. The qualifying projects are those that provide at least 40% of the units in a multifamily rental project as affordable housing, and that affordable limit is identified as up to 125% of area median income. The act provides that a qualifying-
You just said 125%. Did you mean 120?
I'm sorry, my apologies, yes, 120%. Section 125, 120%, thank you, yes. The act provides that qualifying projects move directly to an administrative review and approval process without any action required or necessary authorized by the board, regardless of a comp plan designation or zoning on the property. Qualifying projects will need to follow the typical approval process for administrative, administrative approval process for multifamily projects. That entails a plan review and review for compliance with county regulations, with the exception of use, density, and height. The act provides that projects may be developed at a height that is equal to the height, the highest height allowed within one mile of the site, or three stories, whichever is greater. The land uses that are eligible for qualifying projects are land that's zoned for commercial use, industrial use, or mixed use. That's a short overview of the land use preemption in the Live Local Act, and available for any questions.
I think, I've got a couple of questions, and then I've got a couple of people in the queue as well. And this came up at our last land use meeting, part of discussion dealing with the rezoning of a golf course. At the time, you said that Development Services wouldn't approve such an application. Can you briefly describe why, and would that, that line of thinking or reasoning apply to other golf courses in Hillsborough?
Yes, certainly. The, mentioned, the qualifying zoning for consideration of Live Local Act is land that is zoned for commercial use, industrial use, or mixed use. Now, the act doesn't provide, itself doesn't provide definitions for those terms, however, Florida statutes does in a separate section, chapter 479, have definitions for commercial use and industrial use. Very briefly, commercial use is defined to mean the sale or rental or distribution of products or the performance of services, including office uses. Industrial use is defined to mean the manufacture, assembly, processing, or storage of products or the performance of related services. In terms of mixed use, that also is a term not defined, however, in the context of the act, believe that what is referenced there is a reference to land that includes a residential use and a commercial or industrial use. In the case of, that was in front of the land use meeting last week, the site was zoned specifically for a golf course, and in a review of that zoning, we don't believe that that qualifies as a commercial use or industrial use or mixed use zoning. So under that analysis, it would not be eligible, ineligible zoned land to be considered on the Live Local Act. That rationale could apply to other golf courses, we have instances where those golf courses are on, in planned development zonings that are specifically listed and zoned for golf courses, and we also have instances where golf courses are present in land that's zoned for residential use. In those instances, that same analysis would, we'd look at that, those scenarios the same way.
Okay, thank you. I know one particular concern of St. Pete was the potential impact on coastal high-hazard areas, that's obviously a concern of ours as well, can you just touch on that? Can you just touch on that?
Yes, just, that is a significant issue, and I'd say the act does not address coastal high-hazard areas. So it doesn't make any distinction between land within or without, inside or outside the coastal high-hazard area. Given the preemption on use and density, it doesn't appear that there is a path that allows coastal high-hazard areas to be excluded from consideration under the Live Local Act. That said, if a project were to come in and qualify, they would need to meet flood damage control regulations that would apply to elevation of the property and design of the site, but it would not, it's not clear that there is an ability to deny a project simply because it's in the coastal high-hazard area if it otherwise complies with the Live Local Act.
Okay. We've got several folks in the queue. It's got one last question. Do you have any suggestions or recommendations on action that this board could take?
So, yes, sir. One of the items that is, the main qualifying feature for a Live Local Act project is that it have 40%, at least 40% of the units at the requisite affordability level. We currently are looking at mechanisms to how the county can assure that that affordability will remain in place. Our typical ways of looking at affordable housing for things that are currently in place, such as density bonuses, is we look to have a land use restriction agreement on the property that would ensure the affordability for a period of time. In the case of those lurors that we have dealt with previously, the county has some interest in the property, and that allows some control over it. In Live Local projects, that level of control isn't necessarily there, and doesn't require county funding or contribution to it. So some mechanisms, such as a modified land use restriction agreement, would be a tool that we would look for to ensure that qualifying projects would remain affordable for that 30-year period.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Adam, for being here. You know, I've been pretty outspoken on my position on this. I think that this is going to be a disaster. It's going to fall flat on its face. And unfortunately, my district is going to be probably the test cases for so many of them, District 4. So as far as the urban service area line, so could some of these Live Local Acts, some of these be outside of the urban service area line?
So that's a great question. I believe that we have a regulatory control in place that is outside of use, zoning, and height. To be outside of the urban service area, projects outside the urban service area are generally not served by public utilities. There's a general prohibition of extension of utility lines outside of the urban service area. However, in our land development regulations, there's a prohibition on multifamily projects being served by septic systems. So I believe that those elements would combine to make a project outside of the urban service area very difficult to achieve.
So that could be something this board could look at, is looking at maybe updating or making changes to the urban service area line?
Certainly, changes to the urban service line would affect, given the current regulations, the ability for extension of lines, utility lines, or provision of septic services for multifamily projects, yes.
Yeah, you know, we spent over a month working on a Valrico community plan. It's been the largest turnout, from what planning was telling me, in the history of trying to do one of these plans. And then this comes down the pike, and everybody's terrified in my district. So, you know, I'm going to make a commitment and a promise to fight for the people in my district like I do, always do. Now, for stormwater and things like that, so I'm just trying to grasp how, they've still got to go through these protocols with us in order to actually get approved. So how was that process, and your just estimation? I know this is all new. I think we have two of these filed. Is that safe to say?
We have had, I have had contact from five different representatives of five different sites that have proposed or asked about the availability of Live Local Act. I believe there's a couple others out there who have not directly interacted with us that are perhaps contemplating it. But there's been five that have been in contact with Development Services.
And within the urban service area, this would circumvent our comp plan, our community plans, just to be clear to the public, that this would be outside of this board's control and would, the statute and the act, excuse me, would supersede any of our planning or our ability to make those changes within the urban service area line?
It would supersede that to the extent that we're talking about use or density or height. If there are, we do have some regulations within, in the Land Development Code, that may affect design of projects, and we would apply those to a qualifying project. However, it doesn't, it would not preclude the underlying use for multifamily projects.
Yeah, I mean, I've got these mixed-use projects within the urban service, mixed-use res is in between Lithia Pinecrest Road, all up and down on the property. So according to this, and obviously horrific public safety components in South County, but according to this, none of that would be taken into account as long as it's within the urban service area line, and the project would move forward. That's your estimation?
It would move forward through permitting. It would need to, we would look for, for instance, stormwater. It would need to comply with our stormwater regulations, the Stormwater Technical Manual, and still provide that it doesn't have a negative impact on surrounding properties, but the underlying use itself would move to a permitting process, which is basically a, I would call it a non-discretionary process. Are the regulations met as opposed to taking things such as compatibility into consideration?
Great. All right, I'm going to bring a couple of future items on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Wollstill.
Thank you. Mr. Gormley, not a lot of people know this, but you're an attorney, right?
Yes. I'm with the Development Services Department. I'm not an attorney for the county, but I am-
Right. Before that, did you ever go in front of a judge for anything?
From time to time, yes.
Did a judge ever disagree with your opinion or definition of something?
Yes.
County Attorney Beck, how long have you been an attorney?
35 years.
Has the, has a judge ever gone against your opinion in even including things that Hillsborough County itself has defined as one way and they saw a different way?
No. Yes, they have.
They have. Commissioner Owen, you're an attorney.
Yeah, but the judge was always wrong. I was right.
Commissioner Cohen, I would ask you, but you keep proclaiming you're a bad attorney, so I'll spare you the question. Mr. Gormley, could you give the definition that you gave to me in a few land use meetings prior of RES 9, which is residential 9 density, which is typically for townhomes? But could you give me Hillsborough County's definition of what a RES 9 could potentially be?
So RES 9 is a comp plan category. It allows residential development up to a maximum of nine units per acre by the category. It allows consideration of some neighborhood serving commercial uses, subject to the locational criteria contained in the comprehensive plan.
And specifically, though, it says in that definition that it allows potential mixed use, correct?
It does allow potential mixed use.
And I think that that's very, very important, that no matter what everyone in here is saying, that potentially, if it ever goes in front of a judge, that judge could have differing opinions, and then we would have to go into serious litigation arguing different state statutes. And I would point out that just in Hillsborough County, a state law that was passed last year, a judge went against the actual legislature's opinion that wrote that law. And they, that judge disagreed with the actual person that wrote the law with specific intents and ruled in favor of the City of Tampon something. So I'm extremely concerned of the potential unintended consequences that could come from this. I want you to be right. I do not like this bill. I do not like the circumvention of us to be able to do our job. I'm just saying that I'm extremely concerned about what this could potentially mean, that a low-level, low-impact RES 9 specifically uses words that are covered in this act. And I just want to bring that to everyone's attention. It's extremely concerning.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
This is a huge, huge impact, and I know I've spent a few hours from time to time talking with you about this. But the industrial and commercial, I thought, applied to all areas. The mixed use applies to unincorporated areas as well. I thought it was only incorporated areas.
The act does apply for, for section 7 in the Live Local Act. It applies to land that's zoned for commercial, industrial, or mixed use zoning.
Even in unincorporated areas?
Even in unincorporated areas, yes.
And to, and I just think it would be good to understand this right now. I don't know if you have issues with this act in terms of moving the urban service area line. I just think it should, could be clarified what that means in terms of impact to our unincorporated budget. What happens if you were to move the unincorporated line, the urban service line? That means that we, all the taxpayers in our budget, is responsible for the sewer and wastewater and the roads, and what else? I mean, is that accurate? I don't know if you're the right person, if you want to answer this, or someone else, but-
I'll just say briefly, if the urban service area line is moved, that does change the level of service and the intensity of the land use categories that are contemplated to be within the urban service area.
Right. So does that put us on the hook? Can anyone, does anyone want to address? Rather than the developer, if we don't move the urban service line, the developer pays their own way to all of that. It doesn't put it on our budget. I mean, this would be, like, this would, if you're concerned now about what we're not being able to pay for with our budget, then that would not be something that we would want to do in terms of infrastructure, because that makes us responsible for the infrastructure rather than the developer that's doing this. Isn't, I mean, is, can we have any confirmation of that?
Well, again, not, if, there are criteria in the comprehensive plan currently for moving the urban service boundary. Some of the considerations that are currently there is that the expansion, services generated by the expansion would be borne by those that are being included. So those considerations are in the comprehensive plan right now about moving the urban service boundary. But do you, to the general point, urban service boundary line movement would implicate higher density, higher population, higher intensity of use, and there are impacts that come with that type of intensification of use.
Okay. You just might want to think about that as a, any kind of addressing of this. The other is, so the 120% AMI, this is maybe to Cheryl. So, because I had, I see that there were other formulas. Does, is there a property tax exemption as well if it's 120% of adjusted median income or average median income AMI?
Yeah, there's a tiered, there's a tiered use for it. So if it's 80% to 120%, they get 75% exemption. If it's less than 80%, then it's 100%.
So that's for all 30 years of this?
Yes, that would be for the duration.
So is that a total for any of those apartments?
No, that would be, that would be for the affordable units only.
Okay. And what is, what is 120% of AMI in Hillsborough County right now?
In Hillsborough County, I want to say 120% is close to $85,000 for a three- or four-member family.
Okay. So if, $85,000 for how much?
For a three- or four-member family. So definitely, they are struggling with housing issues, yes.
Okay. So it's any family, three or four members. What about a single person? Do you know?
I don't know right off the top of my head, but it would be closer to 55 or so.
And I understand new HUD guidelines just came out, which has increased the, what is permissible in terms of charging, in terms of rent?
Yes. New guidelines were sent out in, I want to say, the end of April.
And so I think it'd be really important to understand that as well, because we're talking, I mean, I don't think most people think about $85,000. I mean, we, our minimum wage is right now 11. I guess it goes to 12 in September. But when we think about what people are earning, we don't usually think about $85,000. And I'm not disagreeing with you, but, you know, we don't think usually about $85,000 being included, and that's what 120% is. But also, the rents, as I saw them, you know, they're, I mean, what, can you just give a range right now? I know it's really hard, because it goes through all these different tiers.
It is kind of hard, but, you know, I want to say, this is for, you know, for what they call affordable, all the way up to what is deemed as workforce housing as well, which is the, which is right now kind of the most pinched category that we're dealing with. So we have our 4% and our 9% tax-dated deals that typically cover families up to 60%. But that 60% to 120% is an area where, you know, these are working families that are just kind of in a pinch at this time. And I just want to say that these numbers are dictated by the act.
Right. But I think it'd be important to, I would like to see, and maybe we could be supplemented with some information analyzing this, because, you know, you know, I've seen, we're under this, things like the two bedrooms are getting near 1,800, 2,000, which are, you know, what our market rate here. I don't really see a distinction between market rate and that. I know it ties people to, or ties a developer to 30 years, but, I mean, 30 years, it increases in every, also. But around here, it seems very comparable to what market rate is if you go to, at 120%. And there'll be a tax exemption, which they, which we don't really, do we give that a property tax exemption now to our affordable housing?
And so we have what we call like an impact fee waiver, but we don't have a tax exemption program. No, we don't.
Okay. So anything that's been built up till now doesn't have the property tax exemption in the future?
No, not typically. That wasn't how the program was designed in terms of building affordable housing.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And I can provide any supplemental information that you need.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cohen, and then I'm going to make a motion.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I have one question, brief question for Adam. We have comp plan language that guides us that we should be preserving industrial land in certain areas, because we need to have land that's designated for industrial uses. Does this just override that completely?
Commissioner, yes, in my read of it, yes, it does, in that it deals with the use of the land, residential versus industrial use. Yes, sir.
Yeah. I would just make the comment to the other commissioners, that I think if you look at this in the context of what we have approved and denied over the last six months in our land use meetings, particularly- land use meetings, particularly if you look at some of our denials, in many, many cases, those, those projects would not even come to us at all now. They would be automatically approved, and they would be approved with more density than even what was proposed that we rejected. And I can think of a lot of specific examples, both in Commissioner Owen's district and in mine, and in the coastal high hazard areas. So, this, I think, represents an enormous power grab away from local control. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It sounds like there may be some other, but I'm sure there's going to be more discussion moving forward and likely some other action brought by the board. But for the purpose of today, I'm going to pass the gavel and make a motion. Adam, tell me if you're comfortable with how this is worded, just that staff draft, you use the term, well, you use mechanism, and then you also used a term, which I hadn't heard before, but land use restriction agreement. So, if staff could draft mechanism slash whatever LURA is, that ensures affordability and ensures that the project remains in compliance for the 30 years as stipulated in the regulation, and that also that staff assemble and, I guess, put together the guidelines for how such affordable housing applications under this bill will be processed. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I'll pass the gavel, and I'll make that motion for today.
You have a second? Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, and a second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no other comments, please record your votes.
Aye.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thanks, Adam. Thanks, Cheryl. And I'm sure board members, this conversation will continue. Bonnie, next item.
Thank you. The next item is Item B3. This is to consider terminating the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry Second Interim Public-Privet Partnership Agreement. John Mueller will be here to present this item. Sam Hamilton from the county attorney's office is also available for questions.
Morning.
It is still morning. Good morning, commissioners. John Mueller, Director, Facilities Management, Real Estate Services. Today's agenda item is consideration of the termination of the second interim agreement for the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry Public-Privet Partnership Agreements. In accordance with the board's direction at the July 12 meeting, the required 14-day notice per Section 6B of the interim agreement was provided to the project developer to advise them of today's meeting. For clarity to those who are viewing this item, the second interim agreement includes the additional activities defined, to define costs and feasibilities as part of due diligence and investigation for compliance with the Florida statute on public-private partnership or the P3 statute. I'll note that the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry project at times has been referred to as the South County or the McDill Ferry, to distinguish it from the Cross Bay Ferry Operating Agreement, which provides ferry service between St. Pete and Tampa. Mr. Horwiddell's here, Ms. McDonald's here. I believe Mr. Foss, Special Projects Manager, is virtually online, and we're here for questions. But any questions which require a legal opinion, Mr. Hamilton is here. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. What's the pleasure of the board? Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did review Southswell's additional information, and it still left me unsuayed. I did want to clear up some confusion. Hillsborough County government is not killing the ferry project. As it noted in the project, it said that Mosaic was being a good community partner, surprisingly giving up waterfront property. We are not suggesting in any way that, that Southswell Development should not pursue gaining that property and that partnership with Mosaic to build out this port. They also stated that 90, that potentially 90% of the costs of this venture could be subsidized by the federal government. I definitely suggest that they pursue both of those mechanisms, build the port, get it up and running, and then if they get it up and running and show that it's a sustainable, functional model, then you can come back to whatever board is there here at this time and ask them for a public-private partnership, just like we currently do with the functional Cross Bay Ferry, which we just approved a couple of months ago. So, with that being said, I'm ready to make a motion that pursuant to Section 6B of the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry Second Interim Public-Privet Partnership Agreement as amended, I move that we terminate the agreement as of today, August 2, 2023, thereby terminating the public-private partnership relationship with the project developer, HMS Ferries Incorporated and Southswell Development Group, LLC, and direct the county administrator and county attorney to provide the project developer a written notice of termination in accordance with the agreement.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Wostol. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Owen. Commissioner Kemp.
I'll just say, that is something that I don't think there's any ferry service in the country that has done that. And, you know, it wouldn't, this is the way that it operates, and in fact, it's one of the only times that we've ever had a commitment in advance, which we do have on the table for the funding of the, for the funding of operations. And that's always a big thing. As you know, at heart, 70% of the whole, of heart, is operations. But there is no model that you can give in the country for a transit system that has not, that is, you know, a venture like that to invest in and sit there and not, not be started by the community where they, where it is needed and necessary. And I'll just say, we've had 100, more than 100, or more than 130 emails in here. We've heard a lot, we heard a lot the last time. We do have an important letter from Congresswoman Castor, who has urged us not to do this. She's been involved in getting federal funding, bringing down federal funding now for several years to move this along, because that's what you need to make this happen. They have already secured $500,000 for the feasibility study that started. They built on it with the investment in the ferry. Now that we have a federal grant out there for $4.9 million that we're able to get, there are other grants available to fund this, in part, to build out of Mosaic and also some of the functions over at the base and as well the ferries. So, this $70 million price tag could certainly be something that could be widely covered by grants and add to what we have here, which is a very few options and transit options for people to take. It's so important for McDill, where so many people are traveling there every day by van pool, by bus, and by car on their own, all the way around for an hour. McDill Air Force Base, there is tremendous support on the base for this. We've heard from them also. It's one of our largest employers here, and we could be doing a wonderful job by putting this in place. We could have already had it in place, but we keep holding it up and then, you know, bringing more expense on the project every time. So, it would, it would be so important for those families at McDill when they come here, for them to be spending time with their families, for them not to have to do this terrible commute, and for us to provide options and take cars off the road for people in South County to have access for this, when South County is pummeled by, by growth and, and by cars and by congestion and, you know, the 17 miles that we're talking about with the expansion there. I mean, they said $1.8 billion, and I can't even imagine that's true. It's going to be a decade away and a long time, and it won't even be as direct or serve the needs of so many other people there. So, this is, I believe, a very low-cost option, made lower cost by the availability of grants that we can get, serving McDill, but also serving this county. So, you know, we've gone through this many, many times before. I'm very disappointed that we would cancel this again and not have it and not have it there for an option that could be quick and very low cost relative to any other options that we have.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, I think it's important to note that, you know, if this is terminated, we're not, we're not saying that this option wouldn't be available somehow in the future with other, some other type of mechanisms involved from the, as Commissioner Wostol alluded to, with the federal government. Listen, I think the ferry boat is a, you know, I like it. The problem is, is that, to me, at this point, it is a luxury that we cannot afford. I disagree with Commissioner Kemp. I do not think that this is a low-cost option. I think $70 million, when you have over $1 billion of unfunded road improvements, we can't afford to do that now. Now, I will say, the folks at the Tampa Bay Ferry Alliance that kind of got into the game late, they probably should have been involved from the very beginning, and I know them, respect them. They are people that are passionate and caring about their community. And what I would say is, again, alluding to what Commissioner Wostol said, you know, I would build off the cross ferry and see where we're at at another time. But right now, at this point, where we're at as a county, we cannot afford this price tag. I do disagree that, I think that's a big price tag for us right now when we're in a budget where we're at now. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. I've been on record for this for a number of years, so I'm going to make my remarks very, very brief. I'm just going to say, with minimal ridership, so many unknowns, and an ever-increasing $75 million cost to the taxpayers, the McDill Ferry just does not make good financial sense. The money could be better invested in, in other transit options that would drastically improve ridership and congestion. One thing I do want to point out is, and we did receive a number of emails, and I did not read all of them, but many of them I did, and even with the ferry supporters, there's a lot of confusion between the McDill Ferry in the south and the Cross Bay Ferry. Many emails I read, they were talking about the Cross Bay Ferry and their support and wanted to make sure that we did not, we did not cancel that project. It's a great partnership involving Tampa, Hillsborough County, St. Pete, Pinellas County. I fully support the Cross Bay Ferry, and, and we just recently extended our agreement with them. So, any action we take today does not impact the Cross Bay Ferry. I just want to put that on the record. So, with that, we have a motion by Commissioner Wostol. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cohen.
That's all right. I'll be very brief. I agree with Commissioner Kemp. I really think that it is a mistake to terminate this now. I think that the amount of money, it sounds like a lot, but when you compare it to what it costs to expand even one or two miles of roadway, it really could be an investment that pays off in the future. I think that for people, particularly in the South Tampa Peninsula, where traffic is as bad as it is in other parts of the county, where congestion is a major problem, this was always viewed as something that could take a few cars off the road and perhaps, you know, just alleviate some of the pressure caused by the many, many commutes that take place between McDill and South County. So, I, I just want to say that I agree with Commissioner Kemp's comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. All right, so the motion's by Commissioner Wostol, second, Commissioner Owen. Please record your vote.
No.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Cohen and Kemp voted no.
All right, thank you, John.
Thank you, commissioners. The next, oh, sorry.
Before we go to the next item, Commissioner Myers, want to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this relates to Item B3. As our school, school district begins a new school year next week, we want every student to be able to walk, to school on a sidewalk instead of walking on the shoulders of the street. So, therefore, I move that the $2,660,890.62 be used for safe routes to school, which will require a budget amendment, and that staff bring back a list of sidewalk projects that will benefit from these funds no later than September 20 meeting.
Can we get clarification on that?
We have some funds. You want it from me?
Yes, yes.
Well, we have $2,660,890.62.
You can make some.
I thought it turned, thank you. We have $2,660,890.62 remaining on this project, and I would like that we do a budget amendment to transfer these funds so that we can provide sidewalks for students to walk to school, that they would be walking on the sidewalk instead of walking on the shoulders of the street, and that would be part of a safe route to school.
Point of order, real quick. And I may like what you're saying. The problem is, I think, pursuant to our rules, I don't think we can, we would have to have some type of...
I'm asking Bonnie for clarification on that.
So, there's, the agenda item says that there's about $2.6 million remaining. So, what we could do is bring back the, a recommendation and any necessary work to utilize those $2.6 million for a certain safety features for schools. We can bring that back.
Or I can make it a future item.
Why don't you, I would recommend budget amendment for sidewalks, but personally, so we can consider beyond just sidewalks for the schools, because I'm going to support sidewalk funding, but you start talking about a mile and a half, two miles out from a school, you lose me on there, on the sidewalk there. So, but that's your discretion, if you want to make a motion or future item, or how you want to, how you want to do that.
I'll make it...
Either way, you can give us direction to bring that back to you.
Okay. I think you have what I'm asking for. Am I correct? To make it a future item, to come back with a list of projects that we can fund and utilize these dollars with?
We can do that.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
I think Bonnie's agreed to do it, so she'll bring it back and work with Commissioner Myers.
Okay, Commissioner Wostol?
Mr. Chair, just, I think that it, you should say all remaining funds, because even though a couple of weeks ago it was, it terminated them to do any more work from that day, they will more than likely still have outstanding invoices. So, just say remaining funds, because it will likely not be $2.6 million.
Remaining funds, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
I was going to make a point like that as well.
Okay. All right, Bonnie, you good?
Yes, sir.
All right, next item.
Next item is your item, Commissioner Hagan. Item F1, to direct staff to bring back a report on potential short- and long-term safety enhancements to Morris Bridge Road.
All right, thank you. And this will be quick. Board members, for some time, residents, worship houses, business owners along a segment of Morris Bridge Road have been pointing out the escalating occurrence of car accidents from I-75 to County Line Road. People tell us that more damage is occurring, more injuries are being suffered, and more lives are being lost. As recently as Monday, my office visited the Coyle Lake Isles neighborhood and heard firsthand how deeply concerned and fearful the community is for the safety of their family and neighbors. The same sentiments are shared by people who live at the southern end, closer to the interstate. In fact, we heard that from a rezoning that we had several meetings ago. But people report these days that speeding and reckless passing are the most frightening tendencies. I mean, I can speak from experience, it's been several years, but I lived for a number of years in Cross Creek, and this is the way I used to drive. And unfortunately, I was one of the ones that would frequently pass on that road. But we know this to be a problem. Roadway for many years, approximately one death per year since 2015. And now with the housing boom underway in Pasco, car volumes and speeds are creeping upward. February 22, grandmother, or last year, grandmother was struck and killed. And as recently as early June of this year, two adults were killed in a crash, and two others, including a child, suffered injuries. I know a news report came out in April of 2019, documented a joint examination of the road was done by county traffic management and the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. I'm not sure exactly what changes came as a result of that, but clearly more needs to be done, because people are still, are still dying. I'm told that there are at least six service requests regarding Morris Bridge Road that are presently in the queue. So, for today, I'm just going to make a motion that staff bring back a report. I'm going to pass the gavel to Commissioner Myers, and bring a report just outlining to pass the gavel to Commissioner Myers, and bring a report just outlining a recommend, recommended action plan, including short and long-term safety improvements from Morris Bridge Road, from Cross Creek Boulevard to I-75.
Second.
We have a, a motion by Commissioner Hagan, and second by Commissioner Wostel. See no one in the queue. Please record your votes.
Aye.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Members.
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Owen's item, item F3, to receive an update on the Faithway Sinkhole incident. And Joe Gross and John Paul Lavandera are here to present this item. Commissioner Owen, if you'd say a few words.
Yes, and first, I just want to say thank you for all of your work. Watched all the media and how you all have handled yourselves and addressed this. Sefton is my district, and this was an unfortunate incident that happened a long time ago, and has reopened. So a lot of the folks in my district are very concerned, understandably, and I just appreciate you being here. I wanted to bring forth some type of presentation, just so we can inform the public on what happened and what to expect. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your interest, and good morning, Board. And before John Paul provides a summary of last month's challenging response, I just wanted to acknowledge that, as in the past, when the county has faced a crisis, John Paul proved to be a steady and consummate professional. Over the eight days of intense attention at the Faithway Sinkhole, he once again coordinated the remedial work, handled dozens of media interviews, reassured neighbors, and maintained public confidence. Also wanted to shout out to Todd Pratt, who served as a communications concierge with the abundance of requests for the remote news broadcast. So, John Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Kind of goes without saying, we, we don't want, this is not something that anyone wants to happen, but in some respects, if it has to happen, it happened in the way that's most advantageous to us. The incident opened up in the same location as it did in 2015, same dimensions, same everything, in an area that we control behind two fences not accessible to the public. As had occurred in the past, we did the engineering assessment, and we did a preliminary assessment ourselves in fire rescue at the moment it was reported, and no one is in danger. We have control of the situation. We undertook the remedial efforts with the best recommendations of our professional engineers, and right now, the area is stable, and we continue to monitor it, and we will react as needed. So, I'm open to any questions or any concerns that you may have, but I'm more than happy to provide any clarification.
Yeah, and I, and I think that that's enough. I mean, I think a lot of the folks in, in the Sefton area were worried that it wasn't the same isolated incident, and what to expect moving forward, and, you know, I remember when that tragedy happened, it was horrible. You know, the guy that was living in the house was sleeping, and they never could recover his body, from my understanding, terrible situation. But I think you alluded to that it opening up in the same manner, in the same place where it was, where we have the area quarantined off, was probably the best scenario, other than not reopening, so.
Exactly, Commissioner.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you, I don't know if anyone else has anything, but thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kemp.
Is there anything for us as a board to be doing about this?
Honestly, Commissioner, we're in a good position. As Commissioner Owen mentioned, this is not something that you want to do, but if you got to do it, we have the resources, we have the expertise on hand to handle it, so we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, Bonnie, next item.
Okay, and the next item is Commissioner Wostel's item, item F4, to discuss options for emergency funding for fire rescue.
Commissioner Wostel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just give one second, did have some new information to pass out to all of you. We've, we've all heard in the past couple of weeks, the dire situation that Hillsborough County is currently in in terms of emergency rescue services, its financial position in terms of public safety as a whole. And I went on the search for my, my own option while county staff is reviewing their own, and I am pleased to present to you today an option that is little known, but does exist in Florida state statute. This is a SRTAX that is specifically defined for the funding of emergency fire rescue services and facilities. And with that being said, I first want to say, this, this would not be an additional tax. This would simply be a reimagination of current existing funds that are within the county, and I want to make that very clear to the general public. I promised you that I would not support any increased additional taxes, and, and this, this potential option would meet that objective at hand. The definition of this tax is, of course, as gray as many state laws are, and will require extensive research. It'll require analyzing the costs and benefits that would potentially be seen or occur if we were able to implement this tax and funding source in Hillsborough County. I would say that, based off of my current understanding, which will need a lot more information to have a clear decision, is that the soft numbers would be that the Hillsborough County unincorporated property taxes would see a relief of burden of upwards of low nine figures, excuse me, yes, upwards of low nine figures, but at a minimum of high eight figures of burden of annual relief from the Hillsborough County unincorporated property taxes, respectively, if an agreement is to be had. The three municipalities, the city of Tampa would see low five figures, excuse me, low eight figures of reduction off of their property tax payrolls, and the two smaller municipalities, the city of Temple Terrace and the city of Plant City, would receive a burden reduction on their property taxes of somewhere near seven figures between the two. There is much to be learned about this tax, and for those reasons, we know that time is of the essence. Today, I would like to motion that the Hillsborough County Commissioners create a rapid-response task force comprised and led by myself, Deputy County Administrator Greg Horwiddell, the Director of Budgets, and the Deputy County Attorney Mary Helen Ferris, to fully review the total impacts of this tax, the opportunities that would exist in imposing this tax, and again, to the general public, this is not a suggestion of a new tax to increase your burden, this is simply an opportunity to reimagine the current taxes that are on our existing payrolls.
Okay, so we got a motion by Commissioner Wostel to create a rapid-response task force of staff members and himself to study, I guess, emergency fire rescue services and facility SRTAX. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I do, I see SRTAX, and I get a little nervous, so would you mind just alluding to that again, how that, this is the first time I've seen it? So, would you mind restating kind of how that works?
Well, that's, that's another point of the, of the, having a legal counsel on the Board, is because state laws are old, and they're difficult to discern, but there are options of local SRTAXs that exist, and this is within those, and this would be a simple reimagining what we currently do. It has been agreed by, in a bipartisan way, that we must not continue to operate in the same way that we have continued for the last 30 to 40 years, and this is simply an opportunity to reimagine those SRTAXs. Again, this would not be a suggestion to increase any SRTAXs in Hillsborough County. The exact amount of taxes that are being collected now is what the research would prove out to be.
I got it now, okay. And this is just first, so to create that task force to start that investigation, if you will. Okay, I'll support it.
Christine, you want to make any comments?
Just a quick question. Would you be amenable, Commissioner Wostel, if we also had the attorney in my office, who is an expert on SRTAXs, participate, and that would be Sam Hamilton?
Yeah, and, and the, the individuals that are assigned to this would have discretion to ask any colleagues within their respective departments to add in where they need support.
Thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. My, my concern is, I know last week, we asked County Administrator Bonnie Wostel to bring back her, a plan regarding public safety and transportation. What makes this so different, Commissioner Wostel? Can we wait for County Administrator to bring back a plan?
No, specifically, while I look forward to seeing their options, this specific option had not been mentioned, and has not been mentioned anywhere that I could find, so while I look forward to them bringing us options, I would just simply like the opportunity to leverage our resources and bring all of us an option of my own.
Commissioner Kemp.
I just find being presented with this, like this, is very disturbing and really bad process. In your, you have five words in your agenda item, which you filed, so it wasn't even on the regular agenda, an add-on, and you have absolutely no explanation in that add-on. You have five words, or six, or seven, maybe, I don't know, saying that, you know, something about emergency fire rescue. You give no notice of any of this. We get handed a paragraph right now of the, something about emergency fire rescue services and facility SRTAX. You name specific people on the staff that you want to have to, to do this, and yourself. I just, you know, I think to have no notice of this, no discussion, no information from staff about this, I don't, I mean, I'd like to ask the, in terms of us receiving notice about what is on the agenda, don't we have a rule that gives us some information about what we should have before, before we approach a meeting, so we can even assess something like this? This is very outside of our operating, how we operate, to inform all the Commissioners and give us all an opportunity to really be able to, to understand this.
If I may, just a couple of months ago, Chair Hagan brought forward an item, and while I wasn't at the advantage of having any information, because it's never been brought up, his item had absolutely no backup that I can recall. It had evidently already had extensive studies done about the exact project, of which we were provided nothing, but this Board happily approved in a unanimous vote of seven to zero to research his project with absolutely no backup. But you seem to now have a problem with, with mine?
Yeah, I do, and I have, I've had a problem with many, but with other ones coming to us in this way, yes, I do have a terrible problem with that, but I'd like to just continue on. I was asking the county attorney if we could please.
Yes, Commissioners, your rules in Rule 13 provide some guidance on this, but it is, it is, it has built-in flexibility and is designed to, you know, avoid surprises and to contribute to a collegial body that everybody feels comfortable. So, you know, I think that, given what you're asking, is not to approve something, you're asking to study something, so.
Asking to research.
I think that it's, it's really up to the Board if there's an issue, but.
But what does the Board, what does the rule say about what should, what we should understand about this? I mean, what would be, why, you know, this is the second time this happened, because this happened with the not-for-profits. We didn't get anything, we didn't hear anything, we just have it thrown on the agenda late with just a title, and then, you know, the county attorney gets a copy of the motion. I mean, it's just, it's really.
You had a 20-page report for over 70 days.
Commissioner Wostel, hold on, but. Commissioner Kemp, finish.
Yes, and I, I do want to find out exactly what the rule says about how this should go, whether someone wants to abide by it or not, but it, how the rule.
So the rule is many, many paragraphs. I don't, I don't know that you want me to read all of it. It, it places the responsibility for determining subject matter appropriateness with the county administrator, and then some of the highlights of the rule provide the timelines, the deadlines, when the information has to be provided, and it states that it should provide sufficient detail so that Commissioners can understand the nature of the item discussed, and to allow for the proper staff to be in attendance. It, it, it goes on for many more paragraphs, I think, trying to give the Board just a general concept of, of the protocols that are desired in your policies, and then I think it's up to the Board to, you know, make those determinations of whether it's consistent.
Yes. And I'll just say, I would like a, a staff analysis of just a regular report, without a, you know, a single Commissioner sharing it, and then deciding who would be the participants in that. I just think it's, it's bypassing what are, what we should have for information, and an adequate report and review of what it is that you're suggesting, which I still don't know, and to have it just sprung on us like this, I really think is, you know, is really inappropriate procedure, and that there should be more respect for your fellow Commissioners, and more information so that they can make decisions and figure out where it is we're going with this.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda.
Yes, so I was in the queue to speak before the county attorney had spoken, but Commissioner Wostel, he's only put, asking for research and information, and so that we can have something to compare to, and so that we can have our best options available. So when it does come about, we, we can vote accordingly, the best option.
All right, thank you. And before I go back to Commissioner Wostel, I just want to point out that we're really talking about two separate issues here. One involves, I guess, agenda items, and, you know, how much information's supplied, and, and perhaps that's something that, that we should consider in a future workshop or future policy, you know, change that we should, we should consider. I know I frequently do that, as Commissioner Wostel mentioned, although I'm having trouble recalling which one you're talking about. Was it the sports complex? Okay. But I've, I've done that, I've been guilty of that as well. Now, with respect to this item here, first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Wostel for his, his leadership on this. I know this has certainly been a priority of his since, since getting on the Board. On my time here, creating task forces have been fairly commonplace through the years, as well as the, the Commissioner who brought it up, including his or herself as the Chair or being on there. Healthcare jumps out, economic development, transportation, all those have been brought up. Clearly, this is an enormous need, as we're all aware, it's a priority for all of us, as Commissioner Cameron Sepeda said, you know, irrespective of what was passed out today, all we're, all we're really doing here is, is getting more information, which, you know, I'm always going, going to support. So, with that, Commissioner Wostel, you have a follow-up comment?
Commissioner Hagan.
Oh, yeah, look, I'm sorry, I'm, Commissioner Cohen, I keep ignoring you, I'm sorry.
Um, well, you know, I, I do, on the, thank you for what you just said, because I was wondering whether or not there was any precedent for a task force, including a Commissioner and staff, and hearing that there is, that makes me more comfortable that it would be appropriate to have that. And I agree, Commissioner Wostel, if there's something there, and, and you can find it to deal with this important issue, I'm, I'm all for hearing a report back on, on what you've come up with. As, as a matter of fact, you have mentioned some other things recently in other meetings that I agreed with looking at as well, and I'm, you know, you've limited yourself to just this one issue, but you brought up the issue yourself of looking at the reserves, and whether or not our contribution might be a little bit too robust this year, and I would encourage you to examine that again as well, you know, keeping, of course, our, our debt, our, our credit rating and our debt covenants in mind. To, to the issue that Commissioner Kemp raised, I do think in the future, it would be better to have a little bit more information, so that we know what the conversation is going to be about. It also, I think, is fair to the public to give them some notice of what we're going to be talking about. But on what you're, what you're suggesting today, I think that I can be supportive of, of having you look into that.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, and to be respectful to everyone, I would just like to ask that if we receive information, that we receive it by the close of business the day before the Board meeting, as well as the County Administrator receive a copy of anything that we want to bring to. as the county administrator receive a copy of anything that we want to bring to the board. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Kemp?
Just one more comment. It's just not about us either, it's about the public. And there is no mention in this about a task force, about, I mean, those things, obviously you've been thinking about it, you even have the members. So, you know, why you wouldn't give us and the public more information about this, I don't know, but I, I find it challenging.
Commissioner Walstall?
Thank you, Chair. And I'll just close on this. Beyond resenting basically absolutely everything Commissioner Kemp just said, while we have the firefighters that sit in front of us and we weep in front of them and promise them stuff when they're not here, when an option that comes up to support them, I find particularly grotesque, when all that I'm asking to do is research more information that could help improve the safety and medical care and lives of everyone in Hillsborough County. I also resent the fact that while they're happy to unanimously support a vote that has absolutely no information, because that would benefit the nonprofit that they have flagged millions of dollars to over the past six or seven years, but in this particular time they have an issue, is just beyond the pale. So I look forward to the vote and bringing back this board a feasible, feasible and functionable option for improving the lives of everyone in Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last comment I'll make before we vote, candidly, in the past, we've had commissioners that have supplied far less information, believe it or not. And while usually it's best, or it is best, to provide as much upfront information as possible, the reality is, if you don't, you risk very likely that what you're bringing up will not pass. And candidly, while I'm fully supportive of Commissioner Walstall today, one of the reasons why I did not support the, the tax proposal you brought up last time, because I didn't have more time to digest it, and I said it at that time. So it's the, up to the commissioner's, you know, prerogative how much he or she wants to provide, but you're also rolling the dice when you do that, that you might not get the support. And that's just a call that each commissioner has to make. So with that motion by Commissioner Walstall, who was the second by, again, Commissioner Owen, please record your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Bonnie?
Thank you. Your next item is a staff report. This is Item G2. This is to receive a report from the county attorney's office and procurement services regarding modifications to certain procurement processes, including the cone of silence. Commissioner Walstall had asked for this report. Sam Hamilton from the county attorney's office is here, and Scott Strowmer is here as well for any questions.
Good morning, I guess I should say good afternoon at this point, Sam Hamilton, County Attorney's Office. Very briefly, what was requested was for us to come back with some proposed language for some changes to the procurement process, specifically to the cone of silence, to, to propose changes or provide changes, I should say, as to when that is effective and to remove its application with sole source procurements. Very briefly, what is the cone of silence? It's currently in the county ordinance on procurements. It prohibits bidders from communicating with staff and the board regarding a procurement solicitation. It goes into effect when the solicitation is issued and ends when the contract is awarded or the solicitation is actually canceled. What we've provided is actually in the report, there are a couple of options. One would be to remove the application of the cone of silence for sole source procurements, that's provided for. In addition, on the front end, what's proposed is that there would be a pre-solicitation notice issued, just so everyone would be aware of what was coming. The cone of silence would not apply during that period. It would still go into effect when the formal solicitation is issued, but not in that timeframe for that pre-solicitation. And then on the back end, the, the change that's provided for in the report, it would end the earlier of when the solicitation is canceled, if it is canceled, or five business days after the county issues its notice of intent to award. With, with all procurements, the procurement services department provides a notice of intent to award before it comes to the board. The only exception would be when it would end as if in that window, there is a protest filed that's compliant with the county's ordinance on protest. If a protest is filed, then the cone of silence would remain in effect until the actual protest process is completed. That's really to address various due process issues, dealing with ex parte communications and whatnot. With that, I'm obviously here for any questions, as is Mr. Strowmer.
Thank you, Sam. Commissioner Walstall?
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Strowmer. Everything that you briefed me on, I'm extremely comfortable with, and I think that this addresses exactly what I asked for. The, I would just ask opinions of the board on, I didn't feel like there was a right or wrong number in terms of the high value. I don't want to overshoot, undershoot, don't want to create too much unnecessary work for Mr. Strowmer in these regards. I'm happy to, any opinions? And if, if no one has a differing opinion, then I'm just going to move for all of the options, including the recommended high value being defined as $5 million.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Walstall and second by Commissioner Owen. Seeing no one else in the queue, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, Bonnie?
Thank you. The next item is Item G3. This was requested by Commissioner Cameron Sepeda to receive a report regarding the use of asphalt fiber mesh in road repaving or construction. Josh Bellotti is here to present this staff report.
Hello, Commissioners. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations. At the May 17th B OCC meeting, Commissioner Cameron Sepeda requested that staff investigate a new type of asphalt fiber mesh to be used in repaving or constructing county, roads within the county. She asked for an outline of the cost benefits, including areas where it has already been used in other jurisdictions, and to identify a county road for a potential pilot project. Fiber mesh is an additive that enhances the performance and durability of asphalt mixtures. It consists of small fibers made from materials such as glass, polypropylene, polyester or natural fibers. Fiber mesh is added and mixed at the asphalt plant within specific temperature and mixing constraints and delivered on-site during the normal pavement, paving of roadway. According to staff's research with suppliers, it can be used on arterial, collector, and heavy traffic roads. Staff researched other local agencies that have experience using fiber mesh in Florida, specifically Brevard County, which has used fiber mesh for over five years, the city of Destin, which has a more limited experience, and FDOT, which has observed the use of fiber mesh for research purposes. Findings include an additional cost of between $15 and $20 per ton of asphalt, asphalt, excuse me, and that the application is more suited for high-volume arterial roadways as opposed to residential roads. Staff also consulted with the National Center for Asphalt Technology at Auburn University, which is a world-renowned testing facility that uses accelerated pavement testing to simulate long-term traffic loading conditions in a collapsed time period. Performance on the test track has shown promise, with pavement showing no cracking after an estimated 30 years' worth of traffic. Real-world applications have been in place for less time, and so have yet to validate the results of the testing center. Staff also solicited input from our local paving vendors, who would potentially be the ones to utilize this fiber mesh additive in the mixes at the asphalt plant. Their feedback was that they recommend polymers and additives as opposed to fiber mesh, citing the increased cost and additional equipment and personnel required. The county does currently utilize a polymer-modified asphalt mix, which is another mix designed proven effective at extending the life of roadways and also used by neighboring counties and cities. There are a variety of different pavement preservation technologies on the market designed to extend the life of pavement. The county strives to employ an approach of the right treatment, the right location at the right time, to guide decision-making and provide the most cost-effective treatment. Any new pavement preservation treatment should be carefully evaluated for future funding and the additional costs compared to potential benefit. Based on the findings from staff's thorough investigation, the fiber mesh does show potential as an additive for major roadways with high truck traffic. However, the estimated 18% increase in asphalt prices should be considered carefully, particularly in light of the county's financial challenges. As requested, staff has identified a potential pilot project for evaluation. The Waters Avenue resurfacing project from Armenia to Nebraska is an approximately eight-lane-mile project on a high-traffic road and truck route. This project could be put out for competitive bid with the fiber mesh reinforced asphalt as a bid alternate, and if the cost increase remains below 5%, staff would recommend proceeding with the pilot. I just want to close by thanking our staff for their detailed and thorough research on this topic, and the full staff report is included in your backup material, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Josh. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Yes, so this was tested on NCAT, which is the National Center for Asphalt Technology, and it's the number-one test track in the world. And it's, with all the years that they've been testing with these semi-trucks, it has zero cracking at this time. And 18 other states have used the technology on their APL, approved products list. New York, for example, does over a million tons of asphalt in, just in the past year with reinforcement fiber technology as well. Walmart, Home Depot, and Love's Travel Stops as well, uses reinforcement fiber technology. Brevard County has used it for five years with 50% of their asphalt projects. And Ajax as well has used Fortify for over three, three years with Walmart. And, you know, with the, yes, it's maybe costs just a little more, but the roads last 40% longer, the quality of the roads are much better, we would have to use, use less often repave the roads, and of course, would be a huge help with potholes. You saw the video this morning, you know, the quality of, you know, picking it up doesn't fall apart. It's absolutely amazing. Just so many great things, I think, that it has about it, and proven and used by many other large corporations as well. But also, it would be great if we had a project that we could bid on with, with the fiber, 100% with the fiber, but also a project bid with the cost of, without the fiber, to compare the two. And of course, also, there's different layers with that in the paving. So if we could get a full paving, I believe it's three inches, three and a half inches, so that we could do the full paving, you know, the part of it, I think it's three and a half paved, two-inch structural, and then another inch and a half friction, so that we can really see how this works. And it's just amazing that, you know, if the number-one test track in the world and it's showing zero cracking after all these years, and they do use semi-trucks going around constantly for years and years, I mean, it's just amazing. And it would save, would be a great return, you know, on investment, because we're going to have less likely or less often to repave the roads, so, and also be less time of backing up traffic to repave the roads. And so when it comes to that, you know, lasting 40% longer, it's going to be a great return on investment. I believe so.
All right, so would you like to make a motion?
Yes. So I would like to make a motion for Hillsborough County to move forward on the pilot project with Public Works, but also, if it's possible, we could have a much, a larger portion of the road or miles, some miles added to that, because when it comes to cost, of course, like anything else, when you, when you're bidding on that, or, you know, it's going to be more, you know, a lot better to have that extra miles, just like anything else, when you buy in quantity, you know, it's going to be more average cost.
If that's a question of whether we have a larger project?
Yes.
The Waters Avenue project from Armenia, Nebraska, is, Nebraska, is our largest resurfacing project that would have a chance to be funded.
And you said that's...
In FY24. It's approximately $4 million.
And how many lanes? You said it's eight lanes?
Eight lane miles.
Eight lane miles? Okay.
Okay, so the motion is to, for staff to, I guess, come back with the necessary language to put out a bid with, with, using this product and then using the current product. Is that correct?
Yes. The idea is we put it, this product out as a bid alternate, so we would have a cost with it and without it that can be compared and evaluated.
And we have Mr. Lindy here from Fortify. Is there anything, I would just like to know if there's anything you wanted to add to that, Mr. Lindy?
Quickly, sir, running behind today.
Seems like I was just here three hours ago. I've been sitting in that chair the whole time. No, actually, the point on the NCAT being the world's lead is the proof that if anybody has any question on not, whether it works or not, that is five semis, 80,000 tons for nine years driving around. And the project was put together with the Alabama DOT, and they were looking for new products. It was put down in 2012, and like I said, they ran it for nine years of those five semis running around. So it is very real world, and that's how Brevard County ended up following suit with it, and it has had the success with it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. Do we have a second?
I just had a question for Josh real quick, and, Mr. Bellotti, could you, what was the last thing you said about the 5% requirement?
Yes, the recommendation was, based on the research that we did in the added cost to the asphalt mix being between $15 and $20 per ton, we would base our recommendation on if the overall bid cost was less than 5% more, then it would be a recommended alternative.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with seeing the bid results then, just to see the outcome. I'll second.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
I'm fine with seeing the bid results too, and see what they are at, you say $15 to $20 per a ton. How much otherwise are we, I mean, what's the, how much does a ton cost?
That's, that's, I think, why we want to bid it out and find out what the cost would be for an actual real-world project. Those dollar estimates are based on some other experience and research that we did with the other counties and with FDOT, so to really know what it's going to be here, I think the competitive bid will be our best way to determine that.
Because I think it's fine to do it by a competitive bid. Of course, we don't, I mean, there's all kinds of other things that can show about duration, and of course, if we had duration that was cost-effective, a return on investment for that, that would be something to see, but it doesn't sound like we have a lot of evidence about longevity truly on other roads. So I think this is a good cautious way to judge.
Thank you.
All right, and I just want to, I want to thank Commissioner Cameron Sepeda for her creativity in bringing this item forward. Clearly, this is an issue where we have a lot of challenges with, and candidly, it's the exact opposite approach that the county took probably 10, 12 years ago, when there was a decision to go to a cheaper product for resurfacing. And while it was cheaper, inevitably, the road, the roads, because I have several neighborhoods in my district and probably throughout the county, where the conditions have eroded and faded away, creating an aesthetic and visual blight, to be, to be honest. So this is taking the opposite approach, which I guess potentially will cost a little bit more, but it would, I guess, increase the recycling, the recycling or the resurfacing cycle, recycle, if you will. So it would delay having to resurface the roads for a number of years, so I think would be a good thing. But bottom line, doesn't hurt to get the information, and then we can see where it goes, but I want to thank Commissioner Cameron Sepeda for bringing this forward. So we have a motion. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, second. Commissioner Walstall, please record your vote.
Aye.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Bonnie, we're almost there, right?
We're, we're getting there. We have future discussion items, and then after that, we do have the four items that were removed from consent.
All right, we have, any board members have items for future discussion? Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, I have a few. Can I barrel through them real fast?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. As a practicing attorney, there's two courtrooms that are really nice to walk into. One's adoptions and the other one's... One's adoptions, and the other one is the Veterans Treatment Court. And the reason they're great is because they end up in positive outcomes every time. We do have a need, I feel, for a human trafficking treatment court right here in Hillsborough County, and I think we have the right people that are in place right now to do that. We need a court that aims to provide a more comprehensive and victim-centered approach to addressing human trafficking. What's really important to have in place are the mentors. The mentors are what make the Veterans Treatment Court really work, and there are organizations that are in place. Created Tampa, for example, is one of those that are in place. I know, Dr. Cameron Cepeda, you serve on the board, so my future item here is to request staff to communicate with the following individuals and entities for the purpose of obtaining details of the possibility of creating a human trafficking treatment court in Hillsborough County. Chief Judge Christopher Sibella, State Attorney Susan Lopez, Public Defender Julian Holt, Sheriff Chad Cronister, retired Colonel Darryl Reyes with the Veterans Treatment Court, Dottie Grover Skipper, Brent Woody, Director of the Justice Restoration Center, and Created Tampa Organization. Discussion should include, but are not limited to, costs associated with the implementation of the program and resources available to provide mentoring programs like the Veterans Treatment Court. Crimes should include all masking crimes as a result of human trafficking. And I have this all for you, too. My next one is, I request staff to bring back to the board the criteria for implementing a building moratorium on all high-density development for residential property use ranging from RES 9 and above in the areas impacted by the Valrico Community Plan until its completion. Moreover, inform the board of how the moratorium would be impacted by the Live Local Act. And then last, I request staff to bring back to the board policy on moving the urban service area boundaries in East and South County and the financial impact of moving the urban service area line. And I did add that last part, Commissioner Kemp, just because of your questions on the financial impact, so, thank you.
All right, Bonnie, did you get all that?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Walstall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I only have, this is future business, not new business, correct? Future? Okay, thank you very much. I have one item. It's an unfortunate item, but on July the 18th, during the land use meeting, we received documents on the official record that a board-appointed planning commissioner took part in private, non-recorded negotiations with developers. This was a function of legal documents that were created by the Hillsborough County government, namely, the Wyomama Community Plan and the comprehensive plans that codified and legalized Social Equity Task Force. Unfortunately, after these revelations occurred, I reviewed the, I reviewed the documents that were submitted that stated that first right of refusal, brokerage rights, and sell of privately-owned property was negotiated in exchange for letters of support of this government-created body. After reviewing those facts and affirming them, I did personally, from my commissioner's office solely, not as a board, reached out to Commissioner Handy and invited her to resign her position due to the potential ethics and sunshine violations that may or may not have occurred during those transactions, as it is a poor reflection of my office during my time as a Board of County Commissioner. I am in receipt of a denial of the planning commissioner to resign her seat. So at this time, I am tasking the county attorney's office to do a fact-finding review of this Social Equity Task Force, the potential outcomes and negative outcomes that could have occurred, and any violations of ethics and sunshine laws that might exist of a planning commissioner that is in charge of deciding future land use, a planning commissioner that participated in the codification of the same community plan that she then sat on and negotiated private property rights deals with property they do not own, and I would like this report as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Christine, do you, you get all that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think it's very inappropriate to be making accusations.
Commissioner Kemp, this is not discussion or debate.
I do, I do, with people's names and to be, you know, stating this, I mean, it's one thing to state if you want to look at it and see what the rules are.
All right, Commissioner Kemp, we don't, we don't get into discussion or debate here. All right, anyone else, future issues? Bonnie?
Okay, the first item that was pulled from consent is Item A12. This is to approve the award allocation for the Historic Preservation Challenge Grant Program of a million three to 15 applications, applicants, sorry, as recommended by the Historic Preservation Challenge Grant Review Committee. Ron Barton is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Ron.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator. Bonnie appropriately introduced the item. A12 is asking for your approval of an award of funding. Basically, the process is we have applications associated with this program. It's a program that the BOCC adopted in 2011, and based on those applications, we have a citizens committee that's also appointed by the board, that reviews the applications, evaluates them, and then makes a funding recommendation. In this case, 15 applicants, they are suggesting different awards, total amount of a million three. Our normal budget is a million, but we had 300,000 of unused funds from previous years, so we were able to put a little bit more into it this year than in previous years. With that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Commissioner Walstall?
Yeah, no, I think it's, I only pulled this item frankly because of sunshine laws. As pointed out, the last meeting, Commissioner Hagan, it's just, it's good, good for obvious reasons, but bad for reasons like this, is that I simply wanted my two fellow new commissioners to know that this program, and there's a few other that I'm working on, these programs are created by past commissioners that, I like historic preservation, and I wish cars and most things looked like it did in the 1950s, frankly, but we have a lot of serious issues, financial issues, in Hillsborough County, and I'm just trying to make sure that both of you have the opportunity to know that these longtime old programs from 11, I think, 11 or 12 years ago, they kind of bind money from us, especially because this is the first time it's come up. It was in a deep consent item. You need to know that all of these funding mechanisms are in there, but you have the complete ability, if we feel like our current pressing demands for transportation and safety improvements are our number-one priority, this pot of money and a few others that I've identified that I haven't seen come up yet, exist, and when you see them, know that you can change them. These are options where if, when I was talking about my tax exchange, where we're talking about reducing the amount of countywide property taxes from the county and increasing it where we need, which is the unincorporated, what could happen is that the cities, in theory, they could do the exact same increases to make everyone whole, and then they could still reinvest this money into historic preservations in their areas just the same. The opportunities wouldn't be missed, it just wouldn't be coming from us, and I want you guys to see it, and I move for approval of these items. Thank you.
Motion approved. Commissioner Walstall, second. Commissioner Myers, please record your vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
A15?
Thank you. The next item is A15. This is to approve a budget resolution, and this is the Josh Bellotti Show today, so we're going to have Josh come back again to present this item.
Thank you, Commissioners. The background on this item, you know, Public Works, we're regularly reviewing our planned budgets and actual expenses, and working to identify opportunities to maximize use of our available funding. So recently, we were able to identify some FY23 operating funds that were in the Community and Infrastructure Planning Department, originally earmarked for infrastructure, transportation, and land use studies, but were not going to be utilized before the end of FY23. At the same time, we had several unfunded localized pavement repairs that were requested by the Sun City Center Community Association, and so we determined that those repairs could be completed within the fiscal year if this additional operating funds became available. Otherwise, those funds may not have been fully utilized, so that's what this budget amendment represents.
Commissioner Walstall?
Yeah, you know, all we talk about is like bad news, so this is a good news item, though, right? And people need to know that they have creative minds working to improve solutions out there. I mean, I don't want only the bad news topics over and over. You might feel like it's a misuse of your time. I assure you, though, that boosts of morale go a long way, and this deserved to be heard, and I move for approval.
Motion approved. Commissioner Walstall, second.
Yeah, and thanks for your work on this. This is a shovel-ready project that impacts our elderly community. This is a golf cart community, and this road is in horrific shape. It's where every single event is held on Cherry Hill Road, so thank you for all your work on this. Appreciate it.
Please record your votes.
Sorry about that. The next item is Item A21.
I do not have the vote from Commissioner Cohen.
Yes, I'm voting in approval of that.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Sorry, I should jump in again there. And the next item is Item A21. This is to adopt a resolution approving the fee simple title conveyance for a certain property, and Anne Marie Luntin is here to present this item.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and no, I'm not Josh Bellotti. Anne Marie Luntin, Division Director for Real Estate Services. Agenda item A21 is a request for your approval of a resolution to sell a 24,175,000 square feet median for $17,000. It's to the Pebble Creek Homeowners Association of Hillsborough County, and they are a Florida nonprofit. The median is located within Regent's Park Drive, just east of Bruce B. Downs Boulevard, as you can see on the overhead slide. I would also like to state for the record that the resolution in the background has been updated to include the $17,000 purchase price. The Pebble Creek Homeowners Association has been maintaining the community entry sign and landscaping in the median exclusively since 19, since, excuse me, 2019, and several years before jointly. In 2020, the HOA formally contacted our Public Works Department requesting the median. The county has no future interest in the property, nor is it buildable. Florida Statutes 125.38 allows us to convey property to a nonprofit organized to promote community interest and welfare, such as the Pebble Creek HOA for this particular parcel and use. We are reserving a perpetual easement for ingress and egress, road right-of-way, and for maintenance. Upon a review of Board Policy 03.07.00.00, and not having any prior specific funding source that acquired the median, staff has identified that the funds may be used for the Affordable Housing Department budget. The policy states such funds will be considered during the following year's budget process. We remain available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Walstall?
Thank you. You might not be Mr. Bellotti, but you have a much better accent, right, Mr. Bellotti? I just want to know, so we're selling, we're selling land, which I'm assuming is just going to be pretty fungible money, right?
I mean, yes, I mean, it comes in, and we can use it at your discretion.
So then, I'm trying to just, I'm trying to figure out who made the determination to port it, to put it towards the local affordable housing plan? Why was that one picked, and who picked it? How did we get here?
So maybe I can jump in here. The board has a policy that it adopted February 19th, 2020, regarding excess proceeds from surplus of real property sales at affordable housing purposes. And so that is the policy that Anne Marie referenced.
That's in our regular board policies?
It's a board policy, and it was...
That can be waived?
Back in 1919.
Okay, can you tell me that policy number?
03 dot 07 dot 00 dot 00, and I'm going to just hand you over a copy over here.
Okay. Yeah, we just, these are, these are types of things that, these are types of things that are old and existing that we need to know about, that are opportunities of all of the number-one issues that we keep hearing about. This was buried in consent, so is this policy that, and I've read through the policies, I just, there's so many, I didn't see that one. I've read some all the way back to the 1980s. So it's that the sale of all surplus property in Hillsborough County is to be identified and reallocated to affordable housing? Is that what you?
No, there's certain restrictions written within the policy, so it, there was a certain revenue source, I'll use public utilities as a prime example, that would be utility dollars that would go back into the utility fund if it was used for a certain specific purpose. In this particular case, what Anne Marie was saying is that it wasn't designated dollars, and therefore, it could be, could be available in the budget process for this purpose. There's some latitude here, but this is a policy that was fairly recently adopted, like I said, in 2020.
So could this be used to fix any one of the gaping sidewalk holes that exist in Hillsborough County, things like that? Is it, is it general funds?
Yes, in this case.
Oh, okay, then I motion to waive Policy 03.07.00.00 and reallocate the $17,000 of proceeds towards sidewalks repairs in Hillsborough County.
Second. All right, so the motion is to adopt the resolution, but to redirect the funding toward sidewalk repairs?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion now, Commissioner Walstall, second. Commissioner Owen, Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this kind of just woke me up. The, so our board, if you could, when did that board policy come into place, I guess? Let me start with there. You may have already said it.
It's okay. February 2020. So one thing you may want us to look into is whether you want to modify, eliminate, make any changes to the policy in its entirety, and then you, therefore, you wouldn't have to waive it from time to time.
That's what I was going to get at.
I think that's for a future agenda item.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all I have.
All right, so we got a motion in a second. No other comments, please record your vote.
No.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Cohen, can you repeat that?
No.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Cohen voted no.
All right, last item?
The final item is Item A26. This is to approve the updated bylaws of the Citizens Advisory Committee. Brandon Wagner is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'll defer to Adam Eland, the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee, for further comment, but these were recommended changes to the Citizens Advisory Committee's bylaws to make it more efficient and functional for the organization to do its work, and he commented that this morning during public comments, so at this time, I'll defer to him if there's any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Walstall?
No, I think it's great. Thank you so much for being here. I was given the line item changes that weren't originally supplied in the backup, and I read them, I, I thought, wow, what a, the epitome of unintended consequences, that you can't even change which time you meet, right? You guys are volunteers in an extremely inconvenient location for many of you, and you come here and you're trying to improve the community, and as you said, I did go down there, I saw all of you act collegially, even more so than we saw today in our own board, and I thank you so much for all of y'all's hard work. I will absolutely support these, and if you ever need getting, if you missed something and you need my office's support to get them changed quicker next time, just reach out directly, and we'll make sure that's happened, and I move for approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Second. Sir, you waited here all morning. Anything else you want to say?
Please, yeah.
Thank you all, and I guess good afternoon, rather than good morning.
All right, thank you. All right, so we got a motion by Commissioner Walstall, second. Commissioner Owen, no comments, please record your vote.
Aye.
All right, Bonnie, do we have anything else?
That's everything.
All right, we adjourn. All right, we're adjourned.